Anything to report?
No, the City Council considered what's listed on the agenda as well as two other matters related to potential litigation, and there are no reportable actions.
All right, we will now go to the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Alman.
A allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good friend Renee, you know, we went to high school together, she and I. Class of seventy-three.
You know, we can trace how old I am.
Oh, what, no, that was, oh, sorry. Class of two thousand nine.
Got my COVID shot, so I'm just happy sixty-five. I would be in prayer. Who do you, um, by distress, I cry to the Lord, I try to God for help. Father, we cry out to you tonight, Lord, for the many, the Lord, who have suffered, Lord, in their health or have suffered, Lord. For those who have suffered, Lord, economically, Lord, God, but in so many ways, God, devotionally, Lord, that you would strengthen, Lord, God, your people here, Lord, and us, or that you would walk alongside them, Father, and empower them, God, to face them, or that you would guide, Lord, our council members and those other leaders of our municipality, Father, wise decisions, Lord, for the safeguarding of our community, Lord, or be with them and direct them, Lord. Only you know what is ahead, by just by the light, Lord, of your revelation.
Thank you, Renee. So, before we move on, I just wanted to let folks know, we will be swapping five A with five B. So we will be taking, I'm sorry, Bill, to do this to you, but we're going to be swapping five B, taking it first, and then you'll be the last item, okay? Moving on, it gives me incredible pleasure to bring somebody who is near and dear to the city of Norco, Captain Andy Iliya. Captain, congratulations, I'm going to come on down there and... Ab. So, you did a great service, City of Norco. You know, it's funny, it seems like we have a great chief of police, and then it seems like the next one's even better. And I'm thinking that's going to hold true, so he had big steps to walk through. So this is from the City of Norco. Norco City Council recognizes and applauds your service as police chief, two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty-one. Signed by all of us, very snazzy, Kelly designed it. So I just want to present that to you with social distancing.
Thank you.
I'm going to now sort of direct this to First Ted, anything to say?
Yes, can my old help?
Robin?
Captain, I just want to say, congratulations and thank you. One of the hallmarks for me of your service in the city is the community outreach that you did. So many events and well-attended events by our residents, and I really, really appreciated that, so thank you.
Yes, I just want to thank you for your service. I was disappointed to see you go so quickly after I was elected. I want to thank you for your calm and your kind demeanor with so many of our citizens. I really appreciate that, and that was one of the reasons that I was looking forward to working with you, but I wish you the best of luck in your endeavors.
Obviously, thank you for your service. In Elsinore, one of my good friends is, I believe, the mayor this year, Bob McGee. So if you have any issues, you just... Really? I did a building for him, but they're good people, but please tell them hello, but if you have problems, you tell them I'll come down there. But one of my biggest concerns, you did a tremendous job for us, is a few years ago, Kevin and I had to retire our arms, and so with tossing of the cow chips...
I'm going to win this time.
Well, and so we have, hopefully, that Catherine's going to have to compete, but I wanted to know, did you have any tryouts with our lieutenant? That, does he have your arm? Because we're going to have issues, and it looks like where we stand right now, it's going to be Andy and Robin carrying the load for us. And that's the biggest thing I'm going to miss about you, okay? Is I've never seen anybody throw a ball like you, and especially a cow chip. Can we make, can we make you like an honorary something to... Last year, when Kevin and I threw, we both had to go ice our arms, okay? We're done.
Clear across the arena, I was like, oh my goodness, amazing.
I appreciate all you've done. It's been a treat, and best of luck to you.
Deputies, most people don't know that deputies have been patrolling Norco since nineteen oh nine. First contract city, we're very proud of you, and what I really hope is that you know... What's next, general? No, general?
Colonel.
Well, it sounds like Lake Elsinore is a fun place. So anyway, thank you very much, Andy.
Thank you.
I wish we could get pictures and stuff, but we all have to be socially distancing. Should we get a picture? Yeah, I just want to do it right here.
You know, I can't leave unless I say something, so, thank you. No, really, this move and promotion was a complete unexpected shock, and the first thing that the sheriff said to me is, do you want to leave Norco? And I'm like, nope. And he's like, too bad you're leaving. So honestly, when people do come through here and say this is the best assignment that they have, I honestly believe that, and I cannot say anything negative about this city. This city has been tremendous as far as the support for the deputies. You have the best crew in that office, and I know Justin's going to take care of them and bring you even better deputies, so you definitely have a great crew that really loves the city, really cherishes the city and what they've done, and I couldn't have done any of it without them and their support. It's my suggestion, it's them wanting to do it, and they actually love doing it. So they pushed me to do more, and we did more, and it was actually fun, and I hopefully that tradition will continue. But honestly, thank you for all your support. You know, we really want to be good partners with the city of Norco, and honestly, I already miss this community. Being down in Lake Elsinore, it definitely, it hurt, you know, you feel it. You're like, man, I miss this community, and it's honest, I really do. And, you know, I was talking to my wife about that, about how you feel so connected, and I never felt that before in this profession until I came here. So honestly, thank you for that. Great staff in the city. You have the best city manager, I believe, in the Western Hemisphere. You know, honestly, Andy, you're doing a tremendous job here, and you guys are very lucky that you have them. And John, thanks for all your support. Honestly, we've, you've been around longer than I've probably been alive, so... No, honestly, Brian, Chad, Dana, awesome, thank you for everything you guys have done. I appreciate it, and Justin will take care of you, I promise. Lisette, thank you for making sure I don't overspend, appreciate that, no, honestly. Alma, thank you for everything, I appreciate it. And my best friend right there, I'm going to miss getting in your car. No, Chief Ike is a huge asset, and I believe that Cal Fire is probably the best fire department around, and for anybody to think to go to their own city fire department, you guys witnessed that and saw, so... No, definitely, they're doing a great job, and I appreciate them and all their work, so I won't tie up too much of your time, I'm sure someone's waiting for me at home, but no, honestly, thank you, and this isn't goodbye. I'm hoping to see you guys again. You know, I still got a long time in my career, so hopefully I can get back up this way eventually in the near future, in the future, we don't know, it's always up to the sheriff, so...
Well, you are honorary Norconian.
Excellent.
You go, you're there, and say hello to the Monos man if we're there.
Absolutely, I still drive through here every morning, so, yeah. It hurts.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
No, looking forward to the challenges down there, and trying to just bring what we've done here in Norco down there, and share those same ideas and same collaboration between the communities. We're already starting it, so I'm excited about that, and just it's on a larger scale now, so, but other than that, it's exciting, so...
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Take care. So we're going to move on now to City Council Communications Reports on Regional Boards and Commissions. We'll begin with Mayor Protem Newton.
Let's see, well, January twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, attended the Cal Fires, or Cal Fires, Cal Cities, excuse me, Training Academy, like all of us did. And then tomorrow is the Chino Basin Desalter Board of Directors meeting. That's all I have to report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Catherine?
Yes, as Councilmember Newton mentioned, I also attended the Cal Cities Mayor and new Councilmember Training Academy, and that's all I have to report.
Great, thank you. Robin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cal Cities Training, which was incredibly informative and valuable time. City Schools meeting, Poll Barn update with the Deputy City Manager, and then our Homeless Solutions kind of working group had our first introductory meeting as well.
Thank you. Councilman Hoffman?
I was busy, I didn't know Bruin wore that many hats. On Thursday, the twenty-first, met with developers on a, they have an idea what they want to do with some properties at Fort Hammond and Fort, attended the Northwest Mosquito Abatement and Vector Control Meeting. Interesting thing is, in March, first part of March, we'll be virtually attending the American Mosquito Control Association Conference, where our current district manager, Mark Breedenbaugh, will be appointed as the new president of that association. One of the things that they're going to talk about is updates on West Nile at this conference, and as long as the use of drones and the application and control mosquitoes and insects. So then, attended the Riverside County Transportation Commission, Western Riverside County Programs and Projects Committee. I didn't realize they had that many facilities, they spent a lot of money on painting and update, so I was surprised at that. Also was surprised on the Riverside County Transportation Commission meeting, that I didn't realize that there's only one sole source to handle all the traffic collections, all those, your toll roads? I asked them why they didn't have another one, they go, well, they developed a program, so that's interesting. Then I went to the last week's housing project program, I attended the Riverside County Local Agency Formation Commission meeting, not much in our area, most of it had to do with down the southwest and eastern side of the county. Our O A, the One Water, One Watershed Meeting was canceled, but we did receive a written status update in lieu of the meeting for review. Very interesting things coming down in the San Antonio River, what they're doing, and again, it's trying to capture the water and maintain the watershed down there. On Thursday, attended the Riverside Transit Agency meeting, several bus routes in western Riverside County have had to be modified or reduced due to the lack of riders. Overall ridership has dropped sixty-two percent in twenty twenty compared to twenty nineteen. What's really impacted them is school closures, especially the colleges in our area and high schools, they just don't get the ridership. Major impact in the Hemet-San Jacinto area. Met with city staff on February first regarding flooding issues related to Marina Rida Arena and the Veterans Memorial, and then I got to listen to Kevin do his, as President of WRCOG and as the O A representative at the WRCOG meeting. And then Monday night, we had our George A Ingalls Veterans Memorial Executive Committee meeting, and just what we're going to do is we're going to try to put a virtual ceremony together at Ingalls Park for the National Vietnam War Veterans Day, which is on March twenty-ninth. And then I want you all to look forward to seeing the banner program, it will come back, so please check the city website, the Sixth Street banners, they're going to try to get that out there. They've got to redo them, so please, I know Dana will have it out, Kelly will have it out, so make sure you check if you want to put a banner up there. And then today, Riverside Transit Agency Budget and Finance Committee meeting, and those guys like to spend a lot of money too, but most of it was good, they're putting in new, fixing the buses, the transmissions and things like that. I realize those buses have over four hundred thousand miles on them, unbelievable how long they drive those. So that's it, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, January twentieth, Riverside Mayor's meeting, which was pretty good, like everybody else, the Training Academy. January twenty-ninth, Cal Cities Community Service Policy Committee Planning Session, we're arranging, I've decided to make this Norco-centric, this is for the entire state of California. The guest speakers we're arranging will be Brian Petrie and Michelle, talking about COVID parks and recreation programs, and then Karen Roper, we're going to bring her in, I don't know what the dates are yet, but bring her in to talk about real homeless advocacy and real solutions, so I'm excited to bring in Norconians on that. January thirty-first, as you know, we've been working with Europa Valley to let Senator Roth kind of know what we want on these housing bills. Well, coming into the mix now is Corona Eastvale, Westpeak will be speaking to his council, I believe, tonight, and Todd Rigby and Clint will be talking to their council, and what the goal is, is that the four communities plus District Seven out of Riverside, because we are the targets given our large lots, particularly Europa Valley and Norco and Eastvale, and then Corona's concerned also about several of the bills, but unifying and letting Assemblywoman Cervantes and letting Richard Roth know that we're not real happy with their participation in these housing bills. We'd like them for other areas, but in this one area, they really need to rethink their positions. February first, had the first meeting on DRC TC, and another Norconian, Aaron Haig, is our direct person in charge of the Riverside County Regional Conservation Authority. I love this, and I was just appointed to the Executive Committee, which I'm really excited about, I'm the longest-standing member on that committee. I anticipate that next year, as we begin to segue, Catherine will be the one, hopefully, that will move into that. Western Riverside Council of Governments, big doings over there, pulling out of the pace residential due to the Green Home Improvement Lender, Renovate America bankruptcy. What's really sad about this is Green Home Improvement doesn't work, and I don't know why that is, that we keep pushing these programs and they just keep going under. That should be a warning sign, but anyway, we're getting out of that. And then the other part of that is that Rick Bishop is, has announced officially his retirement, and I'm already getting calls from a lot of people who would like to take that position. And then the George A Ingalls Veterans Memorial, we're working on the Blue Gold Star Mother, and I am determined that we are going to have the biggest bulk of that monument up on September twenty-sixth, which is National Gold Star Mother Day, and then I'm also hoping that we can also, between now and then, it would be an easy fix to put up the flags into the entrance into the park. I think that those are very doable things this year, and I think that would add a lot to our community, to sort of buck people up, because these are tough times. Next, thank you. We're planning the annual convention, it's going to be, oh, there's Rick, it's going to be virtual. The idea is to give maybe bragging rights to every city and focus on absolute no politics, just what are cities doing that are absolutely positive, eighteen cities and five or six other entities that belong to WRCOG, and we're thinking of maybe bringing in ten, eleven, and twelve-year-olds to do the interviewing and say, what is good about Moreno Valley? What is good about Norco? What is good about Corona? And I think it'll be a lot of fun. And then, as you know, another executive order came down the pike, it's called Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing. I thought we were going to be okay, and then I spoke with somebody from Congressman's office, this is a, yet another bill that we're going to have to really pay attention to. It essentially is previously under the, not the last administration, but it kind of bolstered the housing moves that were happening in California and other states. This one is even more draconian than the one that was signed before, so we just have to keep an eye on it, because it just makes, paints yet another bull's eye on Norco, and that's all I have, thank you. Yeah.
On the, on the annual convention?
Yeah.
Are you planning a speaker?
The, yeah, we, we had a, we, what they wanted to do is have one speaker from one side, and then they had Rance Prevers from the other side. The speaker on the left side is now, I think he is now the head of the VA, he was committed, and we just really decided just to bring in one side or the other didn't work, and so the guest speaker we're looking to bring in would be somebody that is as inspirational and as big a name as possible. I tell you, you go, you, I go to these meetings, and people hate each other, they hate each other, and we're just not going to buy into that. We're just going to show, hey, our cities are all wonderful, and we're going to bring in somebody that can, that is a bridge, and that's going to be the theme, I think, is that it's the bridge between all of us, and just let the politics play out however they're going to play out, I think that's the goal. They did mention Thomas Sowell, but I'm not, I'm familiar with his economics, but I don't know if he's too political, there's some pastors that have come up, some pretty famous people. In a week, we're going to have another meeting, and they're going to have recommendations for that. But the goal is going to be to focus on each of the eighteen cities, I think it's, you know, water districts and things, to focus on what are you doing right now that changes and betters people's lives, and that's the goal, so, all right. Moving on to the City Council Consent Items. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Prior to the motion to consider any action by the council, any public comments on any of the consent items will be heard. There will be no separate action unless members of the council or the audience request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar. Items removed from the consent calendar will be separately considered under item number three of the agenda. Does anybody right now want to pull an item?
G.
Mr. Mayor, item C is in Charles, and G also, and H is in Henry.
Ted, Greg, so right now, and you said H, Ted?
Yes, sir, H.
Catherine, anything? No. Greg, you're just pulling G? Robin? All right. Do I hear a motion to approve all the rest?
Motion to approve.
Okay. I'll make a second.
Councilmember Alamon?
Yes.
Councilmember Grumeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman? Mayor Pro Tim Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion passed as unanimous?
Thank you. Ted, item C?
Yeah, Brian, this is to Brian. Brian, we got the leak fixed?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. It was just, I know we went through a lot of discussion on that roof and all the parameters and everything, so.
Yeah. And on that particular roof, because that's a coating, they immediately responded, and they feel they've gotten everything. So far, in our last rain, which was after we had the contractor out, we had no leaks.
Okay. And there were, the warranty on that project?
Oh, yeah. Warranty's on there. Actually, the manufacturer and the contractor were both on site.
Okay. I just, I know it leaked.
Oh, I know.
Very frustrating. Very frustrating. Okay. All right. With that, Mr. Mayor, unless somebody else has a thing, who to approve?
Dana, I'm remiss. Were there any public people that wanted to pull any of the items?
We had no public comments received prior to council for, to remove any of the items from consent.
Great, thank you. I apologize. I won't make that mistake again. I will second that. Let's go to a vote.
Councilmember Alamon?
Yes.
Councilmember Grumeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newton?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Motion passed as unanimous?
Great. Now, moving on to G, Greg pulled this, but Ted, Robin also want to weigh in on this. Greg?
Thank you, Mayor. Chad, and I don't want to, my intent's not to cross over to when we talk about this later in the agenda in regard to Measure R. So, couple of questions first, and then my concerns. In this total footage, does it include the new trail that we'll be adding on River Road where we're going to use the NextPave product?
It does, for the future. Yeah, we included that, knowing it would be in place.
Okay. Which will be a different application as far as maintenance with the NextPave?
Potentially, yeah. I mean, we're still, we haven't even started the design. I've just got a quote from Dominic's team to prepare the design. My concern is the cost might be higher than we might want to spend, so I want to make sure. Because NextPave is quite more expensive than DG. So, before I commit to anything, I tended to bring back the information to council to describe what NextPave and the new budget would be, especially if it exceeds the $100,000 that you authorized, or if it happens to work within that budget. But I just wanted to make sure you guys had the option of, if we did DG or did the NextPave, and so you could financially decide which one you want to do.
Okay. So, I'm going to try to word this correctly. And this is, this is about weed abatement on the trails. And we have certain situations, and I'm going to just use one, for example, that's kind of a headache. And this is California, right before you come up to north. That one development, how the drainage from the development crosses the trail, then sits in the gutter. And then, we have this ongoing issue of weeds that grow out of the gutter, where it stagnates. So, to make this like an assumption, not only the weed abatement on trails, this will include removal of the weeds in where we have trails, curb, and gutter adjacent? And you could, just a yes would be fine on that.
Unfortunately, it's not. What intended to be is basically the trail and the parkway. It wouldn't be the gutter. So, if you had weeds growing in the physical concrete gutter, that's my responsibility as Public Works to go out there, spray that, et cetera. It's not part of the contract. They're focused on basically from the back of sidewalk, or back of the curb, through the parkway, through the trail, if it exists, if a parkway exists.
And see, I just have an issue with that, because that's, like I said, it's kind of a ticky tack thing. They're there, they're doing the weed abatement, and just to take that extra 5, 10 minutes to clean out that gutter relieves Public Works of a burden. And to me, that's included in your scope of work. And that, I'm telling you, that's the way I'm going to go with that. And it's just in those cases where it's adjacent. Generally, outside of the LMDs, where do we sandbag?
And that's part of the process. We're going to identify, I mean, there are a lot of locations on the west side, near Bluff. There's some areas there. Certainly, areas, which is part of the process, the trails that go through Neil Snipes Park get heavily eroded, and that's part of this contract, because it includes any trails through parks, plus all the parkway trails, et cetera. So, there's an area that gets eroded all the time, so that would be part of that process. So, we'd go through and determine and create a map of where those are going to be, so that we can document, hey, you know, have you sandbag where you're supposed to sandbag? We go out, do drive-by and check everything. And then, again, once the rain's over, did you go remove everything? So, we haven't established the map yet, but that's the intention, so that we know where it should go.
And that cost will just be a unit cost?
It's, well, if you, if the council accepts the monthly service that we're recommending, then it's, there is no unit cost to it. It is part of the requirement. Every month, anytime there's rain, they have to do it. There's no extra cost to it.
But we don't know how many bags that would be. It could be one or 100.
And it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Yeah, they will have to put them up and remove them every time.
But they couldn't include cleaning out weeds in a gutter? So, the largest item I have on this is, and I'd like to say that overall, their performance has been excellent. The response from the residents, where they've been considered, when they're working in front of residential properties, of the equestrians and the pedestrians on the trail, that, you know, there's no issue with their performance. What I take issue to is the overall dollar amount, which by unit cost is competitive, but that it's on the consent calendar. And I'm going to make a, my recommendation is going to be that this moves to a discussion item. I think that when we're looking at somewhere in the 700,000-plus range, it shouldn't be a consent item. It should be a discussion item. And with that, I'll leave it to my colleagues to comment.
Chad, I'm going to, or Chad, I'm going to apologize upfront. I did not get to send you all these questions. Most of them, you're probably just going to be able to rattle off. So, in the first page of the proposal, they identified several issues that were challenges. One of the ones that stuck out to me was the significant number of erosion sources that needed to be addressed. And my question to you is, when those are residential sources? And it can come from a couple of different ways, as addressed in the report, whether that's overflow from irrigation, or the people's drains literally coming out over the top of trails. Do you, in conjunction with NOVA, have a plan in place for addressing that?
Well, now that we've kind of, in working with NOVA, gotten an accounting of where those places are, we can start working with the residents to figure out what a likely solution is. Some of them may simply be asking them to water less. You know, they're watering every day, they're watering too long, whatever it might be. Trying to work with them to figure out, how can we help them maintain their property, but without eroding the trail? And hopefully, folks will be cooperative with that. Others, it's, a lot of it's the drain that stops at the property line and erodes the trail instead of being at the street. And there's issues there in that if there's not a curb and gutter, where you can actually have a curb cut where it can come out, and it's pretty flat, where does that new drain go? How do we accommodate that or accomplish that without having a solid pipe above ground that may be a problem for people and vehicles, breaking it, driving over it, et cetera? So, staff-wise, it's our responsibility to figure out a solution on how to identify each one, what the scenarios are, try to figure out what the logistics to solve the problem is, and then working with the resident to get that corrected. Whether that's just through working with them, if it's a code enforcement issue, obviously, we want to go through the least intrusive process we can, just working with them, helping them understand what we're trying to accomplish and the benefits is, hopefully, to everybody, and we understand their concern. So, it is a long-term task for us to work with each individual and walk them through that process if we can.
Okay. One of the slides said that they will look good, like, once they go through an area, it will look good for about 90 days, and an ongoing maintenance program would be better, obviously. So, is the goal for them to touch every trail, like, quarterly?
The minimum service is they have to touch and groom and compact every trail once a year. And so, that's going to be a continuous thing they're going to do all year long, and that may be a, it could be a seventh-month process or a 10-month process, depending on rain or other duties. But in between that time, so crews are always grading trails. In between, they're going to key areas that we, either they find that have become overgrown, weeded, stuff that's encroached, whether that's trees or grass, and mitigate all those, wherever that may be, however many times it occurs. Like, they may work on Sixth Streets, for example, once a month, just because the fact that's a high visible area, we've already talked about it, we want to keep it looking good, and as soon as it rains, boom, it pops up and you notice it. So, they're going to be using a lot of that intermediary time with their other crews that aren't on regular trail maintenance to abate everything all the time. So, it's whether we're telling them to do it, or they're finding it on their own and documenting it through the work order system, they will be going where we need them to go and continually do it. So, if they have to go to the same place 15 times, they'll go to the same place 15 times. But they still have to maintain the minimum level of services that you must groom and compact the trails, at least once a year minimum. But they will go and redo a section of trail if you have to redo it multiple times, and there is no extra cost for that.
Okay. So, then that's going to take me to my next question. It talks about the grading, roller, all of that, as needed throughout the year to ensure preservation. So, is that as determined by you? Or is that me taking a picture on the app and submitting it through the city app? Or is that them being out, or a combination of all of those?
It's pretty much a compilation. You know, as a community, we will be looking at issues. They should be on their own, addressing issues that need immediate abatement versus it may wait till the annual grading, the grinding, they may go through and roll it. Or it could be a customer calling and saying, hey, I need more DG because it got eroded out. Then, we'll look at it as staff, because we get that, and we may go, you know, let's just assign that to NOVA. And that's just part of their, they can get some DG from us, and they'll go out and compact it and roll it. So, it's a combination of everything. So, we get the customers' requests for issues, they identify, we'll identify them, NOVA will identify them. But ultimately, NOVA does it all, as far as, as we direct them to.
Okay. And so, when work orders come in through the city app, you'll print them out, and you're going to basically be handing them to NOVA, saying?
Nope. Actually, they use our, they use our actual software, and they have, I have a tablet, and it goes right to them instantly once we send it.
So, we've cut out the middleman, and they can see the list of work orders trail-related?
Yep. And they did that this entire year. They, that's how they documented everything, was in the work order system.
Do they pick up shopping carts, too, in the trails? Just asking for a friend?
That wasn't in the discussion.
I'm just saying.
Maybe if they're next to the grass, they're baiting.
Yeah, yeah. And then, the next one, under weed abatement, it talks about that weeds may be controlled by mechanical means as well as with chemicals. So, I'm going to bring up the chemicals part of this, because I struggle with this as a person that lives on a corner lot and has frontage on two sides. I was going to spray, and one day I was out working and saw a horse coming, a rider with a horse, and the horse stopped to eat what I was planning on spraying. So, I'm not going to spray now. But I understand the economics of why we spray and the need to spray. So, my question to you is, can we work with NOVA to use a product that does not have glyphosate? I know that Brian and I have talked about this years ago, okay? And there wasn't really much on the market. But now, I can go to Home Depot, and I can buy a weed killer that is ammonia-based, and it will work and do the same job. Price point, it's right there. So, it's something that I would really like us to take a look at, is moving away from the glyphosate into a pneumonia-based herbicide with the idea that we don't know when those weeds may or may not be consumed by an animal, even if it's just that base level, other than, you know, the bigger glyphosate discussion and argument that could be had. So, is that something that you have the ability to talk with them? Because I know it says mechanical, but let's be real, they're not going to be out there with a hula-ho getting along the rails. They're going to go through with a tractor and clear, and whatever they can't is going to be sprayed.
Well, but they still go back and remove it. Normally, what they will do on a lot of the weeds, they will spray it so that it dies, and they go back and will remove it, you know, with their hose and shovels and whatnot, and pull that out. And I'm not specifically talking the parkways. A lot of the trail portion, yes, they can, they can
Just scrape.
Remove it with their tractor and comply that stuff through, et cetera. The stuff, and I talked with the contractor, he doesn't do any spraying on the inside of the trail next to the properties, because they don't want to get any issue related to
Right. And I saw that was noted.
Potentially spraying somebody else's grass, or the animals might be over there and eat some of the grass, whatever it might be. Or they even damage the grass and it dies. They don't want to get into that of potential claims of saying, you damaged my property.
Right.
So, anything on that side, they always mechanical means basically remove that material. On the other side, in the middle of the trail, or it's all the way to the curb edge, they will use chemical and mechanical combined to, as needed. The issue brought up as far as chemical, everything's up for discussion. What I don't know, because we hadn't talked about it with them, was if you use an alternate chemical, how does it impact his ability to get the job done as far as timeframe? When we looked at it before, a couple of years ago, the chemicals that are out there, you had to add a lot more to have it the same impact.
Right.
So, the question is, as far as the cost of the chemical that you're purchasing, if you're using twice as much, does it work as well? We understand the concerns about glyphosate. And certainly, it's a thing we can, and talk with them about, is there other alternatives that come up yet that are economical in a large scale that we're going to do, that we could, we consider and use? And they'll be amenable, I'm sure, to that idea, if we're willing to try it and see how it works. And then, he can get back to us as far as what are the pros and cons of it, how it's impacted, and whether there'd be a financial impact to using something else. So, because we do need to be cautious of that. If it's going to take them twice as long to do it, then I imagine, as any contractor would, and say, well, it just now costs me more. So, where's that compensation? But historically, we use glyphosate still for the city. Where we do things, you know, spraying, it does have, the chemicals we use does have it in it. It is still legally allowed to be used. I know there's a lot of concerns of it, talked by a lot of people, and a lot of lawsuits out there, et cetera, against the manufacturer. But it still is allowed and be used as most weed abatement products that you buy at the store still. But they're now becoming other alternatives that vendors are doing, so we can look at that.
Right. And I understand the economics, and I understand that it's legal, but because it's legal doesn't mean it's right.
Right.
And so, I'm just putting that out there for discussion, because I know when we had the discussion several years ago, economically speaking, it was completely off the charts, not even in the ballpark, right? I think now with, you couldn't find anything other than glyphosate based at Home Depot when we had our previous discussions. That's not the case anymore. So, I think it warrants us looking at it again, just to see. And if you come back and we're still way out of the ballpark, then I'll just advocate for more mechanical removal than chemical treatment. So, it's fine. It's just something that I wanted to put on the radar for discussions with the contractor. And then, the last question I have, do you see some of?
And we can do that with our other contractors as well.
Okay. Thank you. And I can give you the product name, like, that I'm using right now to look at as well. And then, the last one I have, with the list of significant, like, challenges, I think they listed, do you see an extra burden being put on code enforcement with some of these issues?
If we actively go after the things that impact them, especially the encroachments, I mean, certainly, they'll, they could be very busy, because there's a lot of them out there. But that's, I, candidly, a bigger political decision if we want to go that route. Obviously, they can do the work, they did do the work, and they can continue to do the work. But part of that was, we wanted them to identify those areas that have impacted our trail in that it's not as wide as it should be, and maybe how they had to maybe handwork in certain areas. So, that was always something I am intending to bring back to council as a discussion, to give you a lot of examples of where these things are and find out, what do we want to do? find out, what do we want to do? Because the last thing I want to start is any type of battle with using code enforcement that ultimately is going to get to you folks, and you're going to have to make choices. And in the past, it has not gone well as far as how that program died very quickly. So I don't want to start something that maybe we're not prepared to commit to.
Okay, thank you, Chad.
I like following Greg and Robin. He answered most of mine, but Chad, I'm not going to let you off the hook. You know, and I'm going to reiterate what Councilman Newton said. I have an issue on this being a consent calendar item. I mean, I know initially, this was supposed to be a three-year program, and we decided when we approved Nova was to make it a one-year, let's see what we do. But now we're going to add and make this two more years and with, or three-quarters of, almost three-quarters of a million dollars. So that's what I'm, that's a lot of money. And I just, I'd rather see it that next time as a discussion item rather. I do appreciate, because I watched the video, you went and took it to the Streets and Trails and Utility Commission. Thank you. And I appreciate their input, and I think you did, too, what they were thinking about. Most of the questions that we're going to ask, and I'm glad that you're going to, they're going to concentrate on Sixth Street. Sixth Street, the maintenance on Sixth Street, that's one of our signature trails, and it needs to be updated. It's your guys, your Public Works crews, your service workers, they can't keep up with it. And then they do a poor job anyway, because they don't care. I mean, that's it. I'm not picking on them, but they're, they're not gardeners, okay? But I do have an issue on part of this, and this goes a little bit, an issue we, I have on, during your presentation, John, I said, well, LMDs have their own, blah, 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 except for LMD-1. But we have one LMD that is at a point where unfortunately, they, we have to decide every year if they're going to maintain trails, or if we're going to do weed clearance, or, because there's not enough money in that LMD. And until they want to do the Prop 218, that, part of that LMD has a huge section of spaced trail that is very visible. It's on the border of our city that everybody drives up and down. What I'd like us to see is, I don't know what the cost are, but see what, come back, see what the cost of them to maintain that trail. I mean, our current contractor doesn't, he can't do it. I mean, I'm sorry, but I'm just being honest. I don't see him being accomplished to do that trail. These guys, even though I had issue with them when they brought all that stuff up from Norcal Hills Road, after I talked to them, we don't have a problem anymore. But it's not you. It was a mess. That stuff is terrible. But we got it handled. But I'm just saying, let's see what, adding that, that trail along LMD, along Hidden Valley and Norcal Hills Road to maintain that, because, like I said, it needs sandbags, it needs that material on the hill. And if we can incorporate that in there, rather than slamming it back to the LMD, and the reason I bring that up, yes, the LMD residents do pay a fee, an annual fee, to maintain it. It's not enough, but they also pay to contribute to the Measure R funds, and what they, and purchasing things here in the city. So, you know, I don't want to ignore that, oh, it's just the LMDs, let's ignore them. I don't play that game. That's our, one of our signature areas, that trail along Hidden Valley and that. So if you can, if you could look at, and in the future, see what it costs us to maintain that, or add that on.
Yeah, and on the fee schedule they have here, you can add, they have a price, we purposely added it in there as far as, for any additional square footage that you want of trail, it's the same exact price.
Okay.
So if you, if that was a decision by the council later date for that, or any other area, or Brian needed additional services for whatever reason-
Well, and he's going to be doing his LMD-2 and LMD-3 and all those four and five, he's going to be doing those chats. But that's an area that we've ignored because of, let's play, until we had, until it got to the point where we're at now. And now we've had to take care of it. So-
With the existing contract, we can provide 30-day notice, and based on what you approve tonight, we could add additional square footage. The key would be that the existing contractor must bring it to a certain level standard before it's accepted by the new contractor. That's written in the contract as well. So if that is something the council wants us to look at, we most certainly could look at that.
So you, you wouldn't be able to, we could have you look at that and bring that back?
Yep, absolutely. And the price is what is here, it wouldn't change. It's just how much square footage would be, what the total price would be. It's going to be this price, same price.
So what's your timeline on this, to get this done? Is a rush to get this hurry up and done, or?
This just starts, the approval for tonight starts the annual, monthly, the monthly maintenance on an annual basis. So this just keeps it going, because we've started this process 12 months ago.
Right.
And many of the trails that already started are already looking shabby, they've got weeds, et cetera. So this gets it started on a monthly maintenance process and gets them out there to keep moving and doing what we're hoping to be here.
This is the time to do it. It's moist, the weather, the weeds are going to be coming up here, and if we get this weather like we had today and next couple of days, those weeds are going to be a foot high. So, and I don't know about the rest, I don't, wasn't it, I want to see us look at that section-
Oh, yeah.
And maybe bring it back-
Yep, we can do that.
To that section as an added to that, to see what the cost are, or that's going to be. Because, like I said, that's our signature, unless some of the other council want to do something different. But I think we need to take care of that, those, that street, those two streets.
We can certainly bring it back as information to council, and if the council as a group would like to add that to the contract, we can always add it at that time as amendment.
Okay, all right. I don't have any further questions. Mr. Mayor?
Couple other questions with that, is that my last statement was that, you know, this, this total amount is over three-quarters of a million dollars. I'm uncomfortable with that being just on consent.
Just for clarification, the, when you say three-quarter million, that's the revised existing contract? What we're only adding is the $172,000 to finish off this fiscal year.
Okay, which, I guess this is the question for my colleagues, that, one, I'd like to see this, in one sense, continued, okay, just because of the dollar amount as a discussion item. But could we be comfortable with just the $172,000 to just keep moving forward and allow you enough time to address all the questions, the discussion items on the remaining $517,000?
I mean-
Well, I guess-
I mean, or-
I totally get your point.
I guess it goes back to this, Chad-
Sure.
That they've done a great job, but you keep your subcontractors honest. There's no comparison prices in here. We do know what Bright Views prices were when we first bid that out, but that's not included in this. So what we're doing is accepting one contractor's single unit price, price point-
Right.
With no further request for proposals and no comparisons in cost.
But keep in mind, we did that originally. That's how we got to Nova, where nobody was competitive to Nova.
Right.
They then, they then did the work that we asked them to, as they, only as a one-year contract, understanding they were basically auditioning to try to get the remainder of the desired contract, which was additional years. We did compare, and then we revised the numbers, looked at them, verified with final square footage. We did look at them with Bright Views numbers. They are comparable to Bright Views numbers, almost to the exact. They're, they're literally-
But not, not included in the information that council has tonight?
You're correct. I didn't bring in Bright Views number as additional information, and you're correct, that probably would have been helpful to you, at least as a comparison, and that's a good point.
And the other point that I make, that is, like I said, you keep your subcontractors honest, that, is there another company out there that could be, perform just as well and maybe a little more competitively? We don't know that, and at this time. And I'm not asking to, like, go out to bid at this, it's just, I think this needs to be a discussion item.
And I, and I apologize for it not making a discussion item. In, in reality, it is a lot of money, as far as a total program. What we're asking for to finish this fiscal year isn't, isn't as substantial, but each actual full year is over $500,000. So it is a, not a small number. You know, in our, in our working relationship with Nova, you know, we, when they and others presented, it was understood that they were bidding and proposing for, and their pricing was related to recouping their funding for their equipment and whatnot for a three-year basis. They had to stick with the fact that they were going to do their pricing in year one and hope to get the remainder. And I thought, as far as that understanding is, if they perform well, we'll continue. If you don't perform well, I'm going out to get competitive pricing. It was my statement in this process, say they did a very good job, they were very, very much a good partner, and that's, and because of the fact I already approved their proposal and council approved their proposal as far as accepting their contract for at least the one year, to me was a, a statement that says that we're going to give you a chance and opportunity, and that's why I didn't do any comparative shopping other than our existing contractor, which unfortunately, I didn't give you that information, I acknowledge that, that probably would have helped. But to me, I think it's, part of that is the relationship with your contractor is, keep them honest, but they've been extremely good in performing, they've done a lot of extra work that we didn't pay for, because they care about the details. They want it to look good, they take pride in what they're doing, and they didn't ask for extra money. They just, and they, they pay attention to that detail, and I'd like that, in contractors. So I would like to keep with them and keep moving with them. We certainly can go out in the future and compare at that point if we want to renew, as it does give the opportunity to renew. And if we're, if we're happy with their services, then we can continue with them, and, or we can simply say we want to go out and keep you honest at that point. And that's a choice. But that was just my perspective of why we took the route we did, is because they did, really did a good job. And I want to be fair to them, for how I originally proposed this project was intended to be a longer relationship to start with. And they, they've stepped up and done what I've asked them to do, so that's-
And like I said, I didn't have an issue with their performance at all. How they internally want to amortize their equipment, that, that's on them. That should never come into our consideration, I don't think. And if you're betting on the come for a multi-year contract, well, then that's the risk you take as a business owner. I just, I just feel that for those, those type of dollars, it warrants a discussion and a comparison, something. It's public funding. It's a great use of Measure R funds. That's what all the residents voted on. I don't have any issue with that. I guess it's kind of what you're-
Just to add to-
The consensus is on the $172,000 to keep the ball rolling, but it's big bucks.
Their cost is about a penny, just at a penny a square foot. Our existing contract with Bright View is around the same price per square foot.
Yes, I just do want to speak about adopting a policy that sets what goes on consent calendar based on their amount. I understand the unique issues that are presented with this particular issue, especially on, on the procurement side. And certainly, if that's what the city council wants, we can go out and do that process. But I would also agree with Chad that we need to provide the funding to complete the fiscal year and then do the procurement process. But I don't think it's a good policy, again, to set what goes on consent calendar on the basis of their amount. Items that can go on the consent calendar are considered to be routine. This is, I think, should be a case-by-case analysis. And if we believe an item is an item that deserves additional discussion, certainly would place it as a discussion item so that it will be discussed. But again, I am concerned about just making a policy that uses a threshold amount, and I would discourage that.
Can I get just clarification? I just want to make sure that, for Councilman Newton, are you thinking or suggesting in regards to the contract itself to just fund, and that's all we're asking for tonight, is the additional funding for the remainder of the fiscal year. But you're also approving a contract that's through 2023, the extra two years. I want to make sure, if we're going to do an abbreviated contract, then I need to let the contractor know to find out if he even wants to do it. Because if he's going to be competing again, he may decide he doesn't want to do it at all. I just want to fairly ask him. You know, I, and I, so I just want to make sure I'm giving you the information you need. If you want to bring it back with additional information at the next council meeting and have it as a discussion item again, I have no problem with that. But I would advocate that the decision should be to either have a program or not. They know absolutely, and it's in the contract itself, that if funding is not there, then we are not obligated to pay them. Meaning, if Measure R decides and council decides that we don't want to use that money, then we simply cancel the contract. But I want to make sure if we were going to go out again, then we should do that now, to be fair to them, and not drag them on, and then all of a sudden in June, we're doing this again, and when they thought they had a contract.
No, I think that, that's not the point, or you're missing the point a little bit. First, I'd like to say that, Andy, I'm, I'm not recommending any sort of having a policy decision on a dollar amount, and that's not the intent. It's more of discussion. I'm okay with approving the resolution to the end of the fiscal year for the $172,000. It's just when it's a larger magnitude on a multi-year contract that it should be a discussion item-
Right.
With more information. They've done a great job. I'm not, if I, if I know we're keeping them honest, we don't need to go out to bid or get RFPs on this, as long as we know that they're competitive, and, and we know that we still have that same performance level.
Right.
Does that kind of-
No, I totally get it, and that's my fault.
That answered your question, though.
Yeah, it does. I mean, I just, I think where I mis-thought is thinking I needed to bring in additional information that's comparative, but obviously, it really does help in the decision-making. And even though we made, had, Brian had lengthy discussions pointing out that they're actually the same price as Bright View, not adding that information would have helped in at least showing that we're keeping them honest and keeping it comparable. So I, I understand what you're saying to me.
Okay. If there's no other, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 202102, as recommended by the Measure R Committee in the dollar amount of $172,429. That is the correct-
Yes, and then it's-
The way you want it.
That's, so there's two items there, but it's also approving the contract to Nova for the, for the, till, through June of 2023.
My motion stands as I made it. I don't want to go to the, the 500, the half a million-dollar one, till we have a discussion item, a discussion on it, with comparisons and everything else.
So there's a motion on the floor?
I will second that motion.
I would recommend that you actually table it-
Guys amend it however you want, then.
If that's the case, because I don't think it's a, I don't, otherwise, you have to amend the contract, because the contract only goes, it actually is, is done. So the contract before you is through June of 2023, so you need to modify that contract to say it's only through June of 2021. And if that's the case, then I really need to sit down with the contract to find out if he even wants to proceed, because that's not what I've had discussions with him on, is, is the length of the contract and what his pricing would be for it. So I would rather have you table it, let me talk with him, and then I can bring it back as a discussion item and see what you want to do.
There's a motion on the floor under discussion. Catherine, did you have something? Chime in? No, they're under discussion.
Okay. I've heard from a lot of residents who have really appreciated and really been glad the city has been using Measure R money to maintain the trails. That's been a wish and a desire of our community for a long time. The trails are appreciated by equestrians, by, by people who are not equestrians. They're out walking, they're jogging, and so forth. And so I've also heard from a number of people who want to see our city reflect the charm that they see in it. So I was glad to see this on the agenda. I'm glad to see that Measure R funds are being used in this way that, that our community wants them to be used. I had actually emailed Chad with the same question that Robin had about, about the chemicals, so I would, I would second what she said in terms of alternatives. We have a number of animals that are on those trails, liability lawsuits and so forth. So I absolutely would like to hear, hear back on that. I would make a motion to approve, or can I make a motion?
We can, there's a motion on the floor.
She, she can make a substitute motion.
You can make a substitute motion, often.
I would make a motion to approve the resolution as it stands and the two-year contract.
I would second that. So do we vote on the first or second motion?
Which is the first or second?
Is it the first or second?
I seconded it.
Oh, you seconded it. You hold on a substitute motion.
Under discussion, Andy?
Yeah, just one, so that we are all clear on this. Approving the contract doesn't mean you have approved a $517,000 annual appropriation. That will still come back to the city council as part of our budget process for those amounts to be approved, to be paid. Otherwise, what could happen is if you don't like that, I think Chad correctly pointed out, basically, it doesn't get funded and the contract is null and void. It doesn't have, it doesn't have any weight.
So which one do we vote on? Second one?
The substitute motion for it.
All right, so is there any other discussion?
Just for a point of clarification, to make sure that I'm reading this correctly. The resolution as it stands, we had already approved previously as a council a contract through June of 2023 not to exceed the $517,000. The motion before us is just to appropriate $172,000 additional to supplement what we had already previously approved. Is that correct? OK, so then I guess I'm confused because the way I read the resolution that's at the back of the packet, because you keep saying that we're approving a contract through, with this motion, approving a contract through June 30th of 2023. But I don't read that we're approving that in this resolution.
What's confusing is that the resolution only deals with the $172,000. That's, the separate action is approving the contract, but it's not the resolution, you don't adopt a resolution to approve it.
To get to allow the additional funding, it has to be done by resolution.
OK.
So the resolution just is for the additional funding. As the other item on the staff report is approving the contract. So there's two items, which is approving the contract, which is just a consent item in this particular case of approving that as a part of the staff report. But I have to produce a resolution because I'm requesting additional funding. And that's all this resolution that's part of your overall approval. So you're approving the resolution for the funding and you'd be approving the contract for the services that are going to be rendered using this funding.
Or maybe another way of looking at it is if he wasn't asking for an additional $172,000, there would be no resolution. You'd simply be approving the contract.
Asking to approve the contract. So staff, I'm looking for staff recommendation then. So under staff recommendation, then it's asking for the city council to approve Resolution 21-02 for the $172,000 and increase a purchase order for Nova to the $772,000.
That just takes care of this fiscal year. Next fiscal year, that number will be the contract amount.
OK, and then I see over here on page two, staff is recommending approval of a multi-year contract.
Correct.
So I guess where I'm coming from, I understand the need for a resolution to approve the funding. Is it a separate motion that would have to be made by this body to approve that multi-year contract?
I think that's what the motion councilwoman Allerman made.
She has them both together?
Under these circumstances, that could be this.
They can be together. OK, just clarification.
Yeah, Chad, or Andy, or John, based if numbers that were given, the quote that was given by Nova, if we only do it to, say, to the end of the fiscal year, like this additional, and we go back and redo that, are those numbers good? Or they can put new numbers in, their quote, their prices? I'm just asking because you brought it up.
Or E, if you approve the full contract, let's say, and they're proposing this, and you approve the funding. So all they know is that they've got funding through the fiscal year. So if all of a sudden in the next fiscal year, there's no Measure R money to use or spend on it, then we can cancel their contract. Because it doesn't guarantee, just because we have a contract doesn't guarantee them to work because of the fact if the funding's not there, the project, we can basically cancel their contract. But that would be, so their pricing's locked in.
OK, that's what I'm asking, pricing locked in. That's, that was my question.
But they are bound by their costs.
Rest of it I understood, it's just the pricing, OK.
After, if you want to renew.
Anything else? Call for vote?
And we're voting on the substitute motion, which is as presented by the staff and outlined in the council report.
Proposed by Councilwoman Allerman.
Correct. OK, Councilmember Allerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Grumeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newton?
No.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion passes with Mayor Pro Tim Newton voting no.
Thank you very much, good discussion. Ted, since you pulled this, but Robin also wants to hear this. Moving to Item H.
I'm just looking at the approval of the Resolution OES and allows us to receive application funding for the Federal Show the Grant of $17,323.7. And other amounts are going to be, are unknown. So correct me if I'm wrong. That's all we're getting out of this COVID thing? Is that, or is this the first part?
Different funding sources. This is direct to FEMA. This also allows us to apply for additional funding reimbursements from FEMA up to three years. So the Office of Emergency Services manages that through FEMA. There is no state share here. It's all straight from FEMA. So when we first went into the COVID situation, we had some initial expenses. This grant came up, we applied for it. This is not CARES Act money, separate from this completely. But this opens up the door for us to ask for additional funding. And that's something that both Andy and I and Lissette have talked about, that we're going, we have some other costs that we'll be submitting for approval as well. And it continues as other costs may arrive through this year and are eligible under this program, we can apply for it.
All right, because I mean, for all the things that staff and the city has gone through and our shutdown, and to only get $17,000 is a slap in the face. But since you're telling me this is the beginning and this is, I'm.
Early on, we submitted for this. So when we were doing PPEs and all of these different things, we submitted it, and so the total was $17,000. Since then, other costs have occurred. We're going to be asking for reimbursement on those as well as anything that may arise here in the future. There are a couple of other grants that we have out there that we're going through the process. We've been approved through this application process all the way. OES said to finalize this, we need you to, by resolution, adopt this and assign an agent for grants to be received and in the future. So this authorizes the city manager to be the agent for the city for either application and to receive funds from FEMA.
So we're, hopefully, we'll get additional funding.
We hope.
Thank you.
I've already received $340,000 under the CARES Act.
OK.
So this is in addition to.
All right, well, that's, I didn't know that was 340, but that's, I appreciate that because.
And we have another.
For the last 12 months, almost, our staff and the city has taken a hit. So I would, yeah, OK, that's good. All right, thank you.
Just for clarification, Brian, in the staff report, you talk about that this is for relief funds for up to three years related to COVID-19. But then when I look at the application where the box is checked, it says it's a universal resolution and is effective for all open and future disasters up to three years. So is it limited by COVID or is it not?
It is because there's a DR number here. When you look at the CALOSHA ID number, each disaster gets its own specific number. So when we fill in that number, it does, this is sort of a boilerplate, but it refers back to the CALOSHA ID number, which gives, which was assigned to COVID.
OK, thank you.
But just to add a little more, like if we had another type of disaster or major flood that FEMA was going to come in for, we would probably be doing the same form, except the DR number would be different.
Greg, anything? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Call for vote?
Councilmember Allerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Grumeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman? Mayor Pro Tim Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously? Thank you.
All right, thank you, very good. Moving on to public comments. Do you have any public comments that have come in that you need to read?
Yes, Mayor, actually, we were going to be doing the telephonic tonight.
OK.
So I'll be reading those instructions now. To the public, now is the time to dial in for public comment for Item Number Four, General Public Comments. You will be placed in a queue and your call will be answered in the order received. You will have three minutes to speak. The call will disconnect promptly at the end of three minutes. You will need to call during each item you wish to speak upon. Callers are asked to abide by public decorum and use language that is appropriate to a public environment. Please dial 951-582-5557 now.
Additionally, just to anybody who is going to call in, are all of our numbers are accessible. So if there's more you want to say, please feel free to reach out to your council members.
Hello, you are live. You have three minutes to speak. Please begin now. Hello, you have three minutes to speak. Please begin now.
OK. Are you there, council?
Yes.
OK, good evening, council. This is Mike Thompson. And I just get the idea here that I saw y'all went to this three-day workshop that you're all talking about. And it didn't sound like it was virtual. It sounded like you were all there, which is my point of why I'm wanting it on the record, that asking you to postpone the Norco Valley Square project, slated upcoming planning commission, until the city reopens. Developer seems to be in a hurry with their project and investment, but with the current COVID crisis, meeting your public obligations is tough. Let's ask Disneyland and all the restaurants that are still waiting to get the public back and involvement in their business. So developer, she hasn't even been able to meet with the neighbors in a town hall fashion where they can, they can trade ideas back and forth about what exactly the plan goes. That's my knowledge. And with the city business, when it doesn't directly involve the public's input, you know. But a project that involves this property line shareable deal with these residents, those residents really deserve an opportunity to be heard. And again, if you guys want to portray the transparency and openness to work with the public on big projects like this, you'll delay this project until City Hall is open. And you need to be able to see the faces of the people that these decisions are going to affect. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Just to be, just to be clear, the meetings that we all attended, the 22nd, 23rd, 20, whatever it was, were virtual. In fact, all of us are attending virtual meetings. No, there was no public meeting at all. We all did it over our computers.
Thank you.
Didn't understand that in the.
But thank you, good.
Didn't understand that when you were giving your report.
Now, that's OK, good points.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, you are live. You have three minutes to speak. Please begin.
Thank you.
Please speak.
Thank you. Good evening, council.
Evening.
This is Lynda Dixon. This is a little strange, but, sorry, am I speaking over someone?
No, you're fine.
OK.
You might want to turn your TV down behind you, Linda, or your computer.
OK, I've done that. I just have a very short comment tonight. And it goes a little along with the previous gentleman was talking about. It is very, very difficult for many of us, especially those of us that have been so involved in Norco for so many years, to see so many important projects come before you. And we're not allowed to give our comment. Giving an email comment is OK. But normally, we are privy to your discussions prior to any comments on any subject. So with that in mind, and I would like to suggest that we go back to the way it was, at least in the beginning of COVID. And that was where we were seated outside or in the hall. And we submitted our cards and we were called in as our names came up. We need to do something better or we need to postpone some of these major decisions until the residents can be heard. Thank you so much. I appreciate the fact that we can at least call in.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you.
That was the last caller? OK, and we have no email, any further email comments?
And do you need to read those emails we received or?
No, those were received prior to the 5 o'clock, but you've received on the dais and received by email.
Then closing public comments?
Mr. Mayor, Matt, how many people are viewing us tonight? I'm just curious. 24, thank you, thank you.
All right. All right, now, as I stated before, we're going to actually flip A and B. I apologize, Bill, for that. So going to 5B, order of presentation for discussion items will be one, staff report presentation, council questions of staff, public speakers in favor or against, council discussion in action. Good evening. Oh, sorry.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Bash and council members. I'm here to present the fiscal year 2021 Measure R mid-year budget review and amendment. The original budget was approved by the Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee on July 22, '22. The COC approved the budget and was subsequently adopted by city council in August of 2020. The proposed mid-year budget adjustments are necessary to reflect information that has become available since the budget was adopted and to incorporate any new projects and/or programs that are necessary to maintain and preserve the city's infrastructure. As for mid-year, our total expenditures are proposed to increase by $604,000 and total revenues are proposed to increase by $576,000. On July 22, 2020, the original budget was approved for $3.3 million expenditures and revenues totaling $5.2 million. At the time, it also included a carryover projects that amounted to $2.5 million. At the end of the fiscal year, based on actual expenditures, that amount for the carryover projects was adjusted to actual of $2.3 million. Since then, since July through December and through additional projects that have been brought to Measure R and council, the appropriations are $3.7 million of total Measure R projects. R projects, and a previous of the 2.8 for our carryovers. Staff completed their review of the mid-year budget and are recommending the following adjustments as detailed in Attachment A. One of the items with regards to revenue, currently at 5.1 million, we are recommending that we increase our Measure R revenues to 5.7 million, which both our original and our recommended budget are proposed by our sales tax consultant, HDL. Our revenues would increase by 576,000. Our expenditures, we have three main programs that Chad and Brian will be discussing for the expenditures, but the total would be increased by 604,000. Based on these adjustments, the total available fund at the end of June 30 is estimated to be 3.5 of fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. And with that, I could hand it over to Chad or Brian to discuss their projects.
Add something before you turn it over to Chad and Brian. The item, before you turn it over to Chad and Brian, the item that deals with Auburn Forest Grant is a new capital project and requires a public hearing, and therefore, we will be including this item at our regular mid-year budget adjustment for the city. So we can do the public hearing that is necessary to do that. So we are now asking you to act on that particular item tonight.
There were two projects, or actually, that we had presented to Measure R Committee. The first one is the Senior Center Termite Mitigation Repair Project. This project is $35,000. Upon inspection of the senior center, we have found a big problem with termites. The concerns, and there are two different types of termites that were determined, a subterranean termite and dry wood termites. This has led to wood damage, and to wood damage related to some of the structural beams and fascia around the senior center exterior facade. In working with the city's building official, we identified the structural beams that we really need to bring an engineer in to take a look at that, look at how much the damage is, and what is the recommendations for fixing that particular damage, and then submit a engineer-stamped drawing of those corrections, so the contractor can then perform that. So we set aside some money for that. We have a cost for the mitigation and treatment, and then the wood repair and placement, we've put a placeholder in what we believe, based on our discussions with contractors, what that will cost. And then finally, once we're completed those repairs, this would be the painting, exterior beams, and fascia. The total cost is about $35,000 is our estimate. These are the various locations which we identified termite problems throughout the facility and around the perimeter of the building. Those areas would be treated. We would be using an orange treatment is what we're recommending, which is more environmental. It doesn't require us to tent the building as well. You can see here some of the areas in which we have termite damage, and in some of these particular areas, we can actually take a screwdriver and push it all the way through that beam. So our concerns really are where some of these beams actually tie into the building. And with review from the building official, we felt we need an engineer to come out and take a look at that for us. So that's why we set up the engineering costs versus just treatment to those, because in some of these sections, it's going to have to be removed. Some of the facial treatments, it can be done. A bondo is one of the uses that a lot of the companies do for the wood treatment. However, until I get that final real review from the engineer, we will, we're going to wait for our final determination to put that out to bid to the contractors. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any comments related to this.
Any questions, or Brian? Robin? Oh, go ahead, Ted. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Chad, or Greg.
Judging by those pictures, why would you need a structural engineer to tell you that needs to be replaced, Brian? That is obvious to a blind person.
No, no doubt about it. Our concern was how does it tie back into the building? For me to have a contractor go out there and replace those structural beams and pull the permits for those, I need to have a drawing showing how he's going to do that, and so the discussion was to have the engineer...
So you want the connections?
Yep.
Okay. When was the senior center built?
We're 20 years.
Okay. So we would have the blueprints on file?
Yes, we do have the existing.
Which would show those original connections?
Yeah, my point, though, is that I have to give them specific instructions. I can use the full tie-in ones. One of the concerns that I had when, as we looked at this project, is that a termite contractor will identify, well, I can correct this or that. My concern and the building official is if we're tied in there, we really need to take a look at it, and we're probably looking at really a framing contractor to fix those particular areas.
Right, yeah.
So that's one of the things that we felt it was better to review those particular areas, have an engineer look at it, make sure that it's done right, and then have some oversight of how it's tied in as well.
And just a couple of recommendations, bondos for cars, okay? Not for wood?
I know, but it was funny...
You replace the whole member.
And we have not bid this, we looked at this, but we do get comments like that, and there are various other ones, contractors. However, this will go out to bid once we have the direction from the engineer, and I have reviewed by the building official for that project, and then we'll take it out so it's properly. My concern was, how do we tie this in? And I don't feel comfortable, particularly on the structural beams, using a termite contractor who is not a C contractor for framing.
We'll have a discussion later. Thanks.
Catherine, anything? Robin? Ted? Thank you. Moving on.
As we already discussed, one of the other items was the trail maintenance contract. I won't belabor on this, as far as we just asked for the additional funding from the COC Commission, which they're very happy to move forward with that and continue the program. Oops, down here. So the other program that we asked for funding is one you're aware of, we've been working on it for a while, which is our tree planting program grant. We've already actually accepted the money from Cal Fire that was originally approved and accepted by council, but it wasn't ever created as a true project, and that's one of the things that we're going to be doing, is adding it officially to our CIP project now, that we've done a lot of the legwork, determine how we're going to get the program off and running. So the original grant that was awarded to us was for $243,000 with a match of about $81,000. And that's what we originally asked for Cal Fire to plant 1,200 trees. It was, for us at the time, really just a guesstimate that we put out there what we might be able to do, and how much it may cost. We did a lot of the legwork after the fact of we awarded the contract. We had a technical advisor committee built of multiple vendors for tree planting and some local industry professionals. Our stuck commission was also part of that, to help develop the program, how it should be done, the way we should do it. And basically, from that, we helped got and developed our RFP that actually went out to the public to get quotes on doing the tree planting program, where we had basically a specific list of trees that were going to be planted, based off of our TAC Commission and what they recommended, the trees, our professionals, which ones we should focus on, based off of our current tree planting list that we have. They narrowed it down to about 11 trees that are in the open right-of-way, where there's no overhanging wires, and then about a list of six trees that would be good in areas where there are open overhead wires, so we don't get that conflict in the future of them growing into the Edison wires. So quite a few trees to people to check for, because they wanted, they emphasized we needed diverse forests. So we did our RFP, we got three proposals back, we evaluated them for professional services. WCA, who's our current tree maintenance company, provided the best proposal, not only as professional and content and abilities, but also on pricing. Basically, and I'll show you the next slide, we're the best to do that. But based off that pricing, which is the next slide here, we realized we didn't have enough money to do the program. And so, for example, and this is, scenario can change, and I'll explain how, the purchase of the trees, we have 1,200 trees we have to purchase, and I guess maybe back up one step, we had several meetings with Cal Fire to explain our program, what we're trying to do, them introduce themselves, what the program requirements are and restrictions. One of the things we pointed out at the very beginning is, what if we can't plant 1,200 trees? Either because there's not enough interest from the public, or we don't have the funding to do it. They basically said that if we can't plant the 1,200 trees, that then you should give the money back and not do the program. So it was pretty much either, because we asked, could we do something less, just in the financial amount for what their money would provide, including our match of $81,000? They said no. You had to spend all the money, and you need to plant all the trees. This program is only for 15-gallon trees. They don't want anything larger than that, because they believe it gives the best chance for the tree to grow and develop and train itself, as far as for watering, et cetera. So they wouldn't allow us to do like 24-inch trees or box trees or anything bigger than that, to have something a little more established. So they are going to be small, little stick trees, but that's what the program is. But if we're going to plant 1,200 trees, so purchasing them, and every tree that WCA was offering is $50, flat out. So it doesn't matter what tree it is, it's $50. So it makes it very easy for us in cost. So that's going to be $60,000 right there. To plant them, that 1,200 trees, is going to be $200, based off of all the requirements in the RFP, how it's to be planted, staking it, watering, setting up a planter area around it, so it can be watered and contain it, wiring it properly, getting it set up. That would be 240,000. Then there's the option, we had to figure out, is, because we originally went out to the public to see if they're interested, and our original requirement, in order to make sure these trees had the best chance, was make sure they had water in the future. So we sought people that if you're interested, we did our surveys, is, are you interested in a tree, but you had to have at least a dedicated watering source, or willing to put one in? Because we want to make sure when the tree's planted, it continues to get watering and have the best chance. We only got about 200 people interested that were willing to do that. Out of 1,200, that's not a lot. We ended up working and talking with parks to find out really how many they thought they could initially get or put in, because a lot of their areas have dedicated irrigation. So as part of our RFP, we asked them, because the part of the program, and what we developed with TAC was, you need to have somebody professionally maintaining those trees for at least a year. You don't want to plant them and leave them to their own, and that would include water. And there was debates about whether it should be just watering it for three months, six months, a year, two years. What the group came up with is probably a year is reasonable, and it would be up to the contractor to establish how often they're watered, each month, each week. They'd establish that, but they're required, per the RFP, to guarantee that tree for the year. So after they planted it, started doing that maintenance, if anything happens to that tree in that first 12 months, they have to replant it. So we basically had to create a scenario where you have trees that are going to get watering, and inspection each month, they'll go out every month and inspect the tree, and then in between that, they're also watering it as needed. So we came up and assumed that 800 trees might need watering as part of the program, and that's going to be at $400 per tree, but it's for the full 12 months, so that's $400 for 12 months of maintenance with watering. Then that's $320,000. And then there's the group of maintenance, so continually inspecting every tree once each month, that doesn't need watering. It's a lot cheaper, because they're only going literally out there once a month, they're not going out there multiple times a week or several times a month, depending on the season. So in all, in our guesstimate on how we'd start the program, we'd need about 640,000. The grant only provides us 243,000, so that means we still needed about 397,000 if we're going to do the program. So we went back to the Measure R Commission, asking for their support to use Measure R to plant trees. As you know, the last four years, we have been very active in getting rid of our old forests, ourselves and Edison, helping remove some of the trees that have been kindly butchered and are not healthy. There are a lot of them that underwires and cause us issues, they fall, they break branches, et cetera. So we've removed a lot of trees to help improve the health of our overall forest, but we now need to put trees back, and that's been a big focus and a mission statement from the council for us to do that. So this is that program. If we end up putting in more trees in areas that have watering, then obviously, the numbers will flip and will save money, and any money that's not spent because we ended up doing more trees that had no watering, that money just goes back to Measure R. So, but we think this is a reasonable conservative budget to provide enough funding to get us through the program. My goal is to hopefully, when we bring it back at the next council meeting, as a public hearing, and if it does get approved, we get them started immediately with developing and outlining the areas we're going to plant. Like, with the hope is that we get everything planted by June of this year. It's really just developing the map and plan, saying where you want them, and they go gangbusters to get them planted. So we're, that's my goal. So with that, I'd happy to answer any questions you may have.
So this is going to be a discussion item.
Talked about earlier, I guess you're hearing this information today, but it's coming back to you again next week. Bottom line today is you're not to take action on this, because it requires a public hearing for you to act on this item.
So if I might suggest, since it's coming back, maybe we move on, unless you have questions? So we'll wait as it comes back. Thank you. The one question I'm going to have is, why does a tree cost $50? But put that, think about that. What's the next thing?
That was it.
Is that's it?
Yes.
So is there any other questions on this? What do you guys need from us?
I have a question.
Yeah, Greg, please.
Realizing this will come back, so maybe you're a little more, that's wrong, that's not what I wanted to say, that maybe you'll have some additional answers. I'll give you some insight. Part of the, understanding this is just a Measure R recommendation for funding only. We were going to have a free tree program, and obviously, the Cal Fire, and with our matches, $324,000, and now we adding an additional $300,000 in Measure R funding with a price from one contractor. You had three? Okay, so you will present all three bids? Yes. With that? Okay. I guess just two things kind of trouble me with this, and then maybe we need some out-of-the-box thinking, that some of us will remember that the trees on Sixth Street at Hats and Bueller and Hal Clark would go every Saturday morning, go to Public Works, get the water pulled, and water all the trees on Sixth Street. And, you know, maybe we need a little more community involvement in this, instead of just pushing out Measure R money. And so I just want to give you a heads up that that's somewhat of the heartburn I'm having with this right now, that maybe there's another way or a better way. And I'll leave it at that.
The trees, you make a very good point about how the unfortunate thing is about two-thirds of those trees died, and those are actually trees that were planted, for the most part, after that era. And it wasn't until, Brian, was it you, or was it Bill who put in the irrigation system? Yeah. And once that happened, then the trees. So I get the community involvement, but that one was, I love the story, and they really tried, but most of the trees died, and so...
They spent too much time at the donut shop, finished watering them all.
Wasn't the donut shop. Wasn't the donut shop. And we loved Hal Clark, so. So what, how do we do this resolution without the trees? Okay. And I do have just a couple of really quick questions. One, what's the status of the pool demolition, Brian? Where are we at with the pool demolition?
The actual pool demolition, we have Project Walk tomorrow. Contractor starts supposedly mobilizing Monday.
And then the pole barns, the 1.68 million, is that just for tearing them down, or is that going to give us a little bit?
No, no, that's the full design and build- No, no, that's the full design and build-out. We're out to bid on demo right now, and my tentative schedule is to bring that back at your first meeting in March for a word of contract. And then we're preparing the final RFP for that project to go out.
That's really exciting. That's all I have. So do we hear a motion to approve this sand the urban forest grant? I'll make a motion for the resolution. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a vote.
Councilmember Alman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
We've hit nine o'clock, so we're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and finish up. There's Bill. All right, we're going to bring this back to council. We're going to move to Discussion 5A regarding the creation of an equestrian-themed historic district in the city of Norco. Evening, Bill.
Good evening, Mayor Bash, members of the city council. As you know, I'm Bill Wilkman, I'm your cultural resources consultant. And today, we're going to talk about the creation of an equestrian-themed historic district. You'll recall that twice in November, the subject came up and was discussed at various lengths. And at the last meeting that you had on the subject, you asked me to come back with a work program and a budget for the creation of an equestrian-themed historic district. One of the major questions that was sort of hanging at the end of that meeting, was the question of whether I would have to survey every one of the 507,048 properties that are in the various A zones. And I was most pleased when the State Office of Historic Preservation told me that, no, you don't need to do that, as long as the district is not based on architecture, but rather based on other factors. So that'll greatly simplify the creation of an equestrian-themed historic district. The other thing that it does, which is of great benefit, is it relieves property owners from having to have their alterations and additions reviewed for conformance with the district by the Cultural Heritage Board or by the city staff. And further, people can demolish a building in the district without having to go through an environmental impact report. So those are two major benefits of not having to consider each and every property in the The task work program basically outlines the steps that I would be going through to create a district, and I'll briefly summarize those right now. One would be that I would do an ordinance amendment to add the provisions for historic districts in Title 20, doesn't presently have that at the present time. I would do a reconnaissance survey of the properties in the district. I would analyze existing data on the properties in the A zones. I'd prepare a staff report that would address the district, would talk about the historic context statement of the district, the essential characteristics that would be necessary for a property to be included in the district. It would include a spreadsheet with details on the various properties in the district, a map of the district, and I would also do the state of California forms that would be necessary for documenting the historic district. I'd also prepare a number of items for public information. One would be a handout on the district, another would be a PowerPoint, and there would also be a webpage on the district. I'd also prepare a press release on the district. I'd also assist the city staff, to the extent that they need my help in the notification of property owners for the consideration of the district. I'd also staff a hotline, where people could call in and could ask me questions about the district. And as much as we've got 5,745 properties out there, there could be a considerable number of phone calls that I would be answering. I'd prepare training materials for the staff, and train the staff in the implementation of the district. And of course, I would be meeting with the city staff as necessary. The most significant step for the city in the creation of a district would be that you would need to notify each of the 5,478 properties in the district of the proposal to develop a district. So that's quite an undertaking, and something the city should consider in the question of whether they want to create a district or not. One factor that'll be included in the ordinance will be, what do we do if there are objections to a district? I did a little survey of properties that are CL, not properties, but cities, who are in the Certified Local Government Program. And most of the cities have provisions that say that if about 50% of the property owners object to a district, then it's not formed. And so we'll probably have something like that in our ordinance. Also want to mention that Senate Bill 9 is currently being considered before the state legislature, which would allow ministerial approval of lot splits. And this would include language exempting historic districts. So if we have an historic district, we would not be subject to those requirements. I've attached the proposal to this staff report. Be glad to answer any questions about the report of the proposal. The amount of the proposal is $28,800. Just to let you know, the way I work my proposals is, I actually count my hours that I put into a project. If they don't total up to that amount, then you don't pay that amount, you pay whatever the hours total up to. If I go over that amount, you still only pay that amount. So it's an up to total that you would be paying on the proposal. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have on the proposal or my report.
Before we start, Bill, could you just explain, we know what it is, what it means to be a certified local government, and why that's important?
Yeah. Certified local government is a program that the state of California has, which basically certifies governmental entities that have historic preservation programs, demonstrating that these programs are in compliance with state requirements, and that the programs are professional and well-operated. One of the things I have to do every year for the program is I have to submit an annual report to the state to show that we are complying with all the requirements, and that we're conducting the program in a professional manner.
Great. Who would like to start? Greg?
Good evening, Bill.
Good evening.
How you been?
I've been pretty well.
Good.
No COVID.
Just a couple things, I'll kind of bounce around a little bit, if we could, and I'm going to make this assumption, as far as any informational handout to the residents, press releases, webpage, that this is all coordinated through our communications department?
Yes.
That, turn my recommendation there. So, that, not so much on Senate Bill 9, but this is kind of my overall concern on property rights, on lot splits. So on this themed district, our current ordinance, I believe right now, and Alma, if you want to jump in, feel free. If you have a one-acre property, that, and you have 160 feet of frontage, you can split that property into two half acres, as long as you maintain the 80-foot frontage, and then that requires a dedicated pack on both properties. Would this affect that current ordinance?
No.
Okay. So, not that I like the one-acre splits, but we've done a few of those.
No, whatever your zoning code allows, that would remain in effect.
And that is correct, Alma? On our, that's how our code reads right now? So this is kind of a broad question, that this would be an ordinance with our cultural resources, making the assumption that cultural resources is, basically, would that fall under one of our seven elements of the, with land use in the general plan? With this ordinance?
Right. We need to have you on a mic. Thank you.
Well, as it stands right now, I mean...
There's the microphone. I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Alma.
Yeah, the elements of the general plan, and of course, you know, either your land use, your circulation, your housing, and conservation. It would be, it could be written into the general plan, of course, because it has to be consistent with the general plan, so it could be written into it.
Correct. Okay. So I didn't know, since this is like a cultural resources ordinance, if that falls in that element of cultural resources?
Yeah, there is a section of the general plan that addresses cultural resources.
Right.
Yeah.
So I guess what I'm trying to get at is, when we do this, that, and if it would go that way, I just want to make sure, like, is there a finding that we have to make that this would, like, support the general plan, and be consistent, but not impact individual property rights? And let me put the rest of it.
Yeah.
And we had talked about this previously. So my concern was, like, not wanting to be an HOA, or a South Pasadena, or whatever. If I want to change a window in my door, or a door in my house, I don't have to get anybody's permission to do that.
As long as the building department's happy with it.
Right, as long as it's not a building. But it doesn't have to go to any type of review, if I want to change the color of my roof, or the color of my house, or anything like that?
This wouldn't affect any of those things.
Okay. So, property rights, for the most part, are preserved?
Right. The things that would be contributing to the district would be things like the trails, the types of streets that we have that accommodate horses. I've been talking with Mayor Bash about the fact that the parks all have horse arenas or things like that inside of them, so the parks could be included in the district. So it'd be those kinds of things. The only thing it would affect as far as properties themselves, would be that the property isn't conformance with your zone. And I know you have some non-conforming properties, but that the properties would be in conformance with the zone. In other words, it wouldn't allow somebody to split a property smaller than the zone would allow.
Correct. Right. Okay. So like our Corona Avenue, our smaller lots that we have animal keeping, that wouldn't impact that at all?
They would stay the same.
Okay. Good. Thanks, Bill.
Catherine?
I have a lot of questions. First, I just want to clarify and be clear to be transparent. This will not limit development on any commercially zoned properties or anything that's not Zoned A, and doesn't exempt us from any state requirements for affordable housing, for instance.
Correct.
Okay. And then can you clarify, in terms of the houses that are part of the A lots? When I looked at the zoning map, when I look at the zoning map, Norco Hills and Norco Ridge Ranch are specific, they're zoned as specific plan. Are those, is that area included? I know the smaller R lots are not. I'm understanding, are those...
Anything that's in an A zone. So I believe those specific plan areas are in the A zones.
Okay. So the only, because there's, it's how many houses? So the houses that aren't included are just the houses on the small R lots?
That's correct.
Okay. And from my research, I was looking into historical districts, they're often formed when a neighborhood or part of a community gets together to advocate and request of its city to form a historical district. So I'm curious if residents have ever previously contacted the city and asked to have or start the process of being recognized as a historical district?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. And then, can you give us just an overview of, you know, there's different kinds of historical district. There's historical districts that are recognized by the state, and then there's local historical districts. You know, in my research, trying to find out... You know, in my research, trying to find out, kind of to gauge, this seems like a large number compared to the historical districts I've just seen in other cities. Can you just give some more information or paint a picture of how many houses are, is there another historical district, I guess, equivalent to this size anywhere else in our state or in another municipality?
I haven't made a study of it, but I would doubt that there are any or many others that are of that size. Some cities are of such a major historical importance that they put the whole city in a historic district. So San Francisco is an example. But this would be definitely one of the very few that has that number of properties.
Right. Okay. And then my question, you answered part of it, is some of the unknowns that were in the staff report, one being, you know, what is that number that the city determines what the number for objection would be? And you're saying in many of the other ordinances that it's usually about 50%, which makes sense.
That's correct.
How would residents object?
They would have to object in writing.
So there's 5,748 properties. That means half that number, let me do some quick math, I don't know, 2,900, 2,800 people would have to write in to object?
That's correct. And that information would be included in the legal advertisement, letting them know that if they object, they have to make their objection in writing.
Okay. I had another question. Did you? Oh, sorry. Sometimes with council members, we, there's conflicts of interest where we're not able to vote on things because they affect our property. How does it work in terms of every single one of us would fall within the historic district? Is there any legal...
Oh, no, there's an exception for things which have applications to the public in general. And so, yeah, you're affected the same way as others, so there's no voting.
Just to answer an earlier question you asked...
Of course, you live near Third and Hamner.
Thank you.
Just to answer another question you posed earlier, this would be a local historic district. There are historic districts at the local level, state level and national level. This would be a local district.
Right. Thank you. And then you mentioned being listed on the historic register, that every person's house, residence, would be listed on the historic register?
Every one of the properties in the district would be on the register, but not for architectural purposes, just simply to document who is in and who is not in. Somebody comes into the planning department and says, "I live at so-and-so address. Am I in the district?" You'd be able to look that up and say, "Yes, you're in the district."
Is it more of a lot or parcel number that's listed versus structures?
The list would include address, APN, accessory parcel number, and identifying the property itself and the zone that it's in.
Would that include accessory structures?
Um...
Okay. That's, okay.
That's just lots.
Okay. And I guess, one of the biggest things, and my question is, how will the regulations, so I guess I'm going to come around to one of my later questions. The staff report mentions that lot splits may be prohibited in a historical district. What other regulations can be made regarding what people can or cannot do? This kind of comes to your question. I wasn't as concerned about a window or a door, but more concerned, how could that affect what somebody wants to do with their land? For instance, there is not an ADU ordinance on the books.
Yeah. This really doesn't pertain to any of that. The comment about lot splits really addresses what we assume to be, will, if it's passed, remain in the law and exemption for the requirement that a city approve lot splits and the statute which would require it, which, if, again, there's a lot of ifs in this, and one of the ifs is if AB9 were passed, then without historic district, up to six units per single-family residence or single-family lot would be allowed by statute regardless of what the city's regulations were. There is an exemption in large part because of the city of San Francisco, I believe, that historical districts are exempt. The proponents for this AB9 live in San Francisco.
Senator Roth lives in the Wood District, which is also on the national register or local register.
But the lot split, none of the rules that the city has in terms of zoning or anything else are affected by this at all.
Then what's the point?
The point would be if AB9 didn't exist, I mean, you can comment about what you think the point is, but legally, if it didn't exist, then it probably doesn't have much impact at all. If AB9 passes or something similar to it, like the measure which was proposed last year, it will exempt basically those areas of Norco from the requirements of the statute.
Yes. And I think that's some of the concerns that I heard in terms of, you know, when I think of a historic district, I might think of Pasadena. And if you look up the guide there, it's very restrictive what someone could do with their property. And so that's the question then. Can the city put in place more restrictions outside of that one exemption? Because if it's just that one exemption, I think that makes it a much more streamlined and very clear process in terms of what is happening across the city. However, if there is, if there are more rules or restrictions or limitations, I think that's where...
Yeah. Ultimately, that's up to a city council. And the city council, whether it's a historical district or not, could adopt those regulations. I mean, the historical district isn't particularly relevant to that question. The ordinance won't address any of that. The rules that are in place in the city now are going to be the rules that are in place, except to the extent that future cities change them and tweak them and do the things that you have to do to regulations. But there's nothing in the ordinance as proposed, unless you added it, which would affect architecture or anything else. Pasadena or San Francisco has those provisions in the ordinance that they adopted and the program which was adopted by the state. This won't have any of that stuff. If you thought it did, then you'd strike it and not adopt it.
Then I guess my question is, is there anything else that historical districts are exempt from besides this potential law?
That's what we're concerned about, is that potential law.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know if there were concerns about other ones that have already been established that then there could be regulations on.
And also, just to be clear, whatever the zoning code allows today will be allowed once this district is in place. So the zoning code has lot sizes that are allowed, has uses that are allowed. Those will all remain in effect without any change.
And if there weren't any AB9 or there weren't an exemption, then it would have, as a practical matter, no impact other than you're in a historical district. Doesn't have any impact on what you can do with your property and doesn't control what the city can change or require.
Okay. So it doesn't have any effect on the state laws regarding ADUs?
No.
Okay. That's, thank you. And then one other question. In the proposal, it lists that you would prepare property owner responsibilities. What sorts of responsibilities would you be referring to?
There wouldn't be individual property owner responsibilities. They would strictly be whatever the zoning code requires. So I'm not sure where you saw that in there.
It is in the proposal, I believe? In the proposal. It says, "Prepare an informational handout explaining the nature of an equestrian through a historic district and property owner responsibilities."
Okay, yeah. It would clarify that this isn't going to impinge upon their rights any further than what they already have in place in the zoning code.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm just going to jump in here real quick just for some clarification. One, there's many, many cities that have non-contiguous historic districts, and they're based on many things. This one is based on use. Pasadena, for example, you have the Craftsman Homes, you have the one area that is the turn of the century, 1890s. Riverside, you actually have five, I think it's five districts. You have the Wood Streets, then you have the historic turn of the century mansions that are toward Rubido. You have the downtown section, you have the Mission Inn. You actually have the Mission Inn District. And they're all based on different architectures, different things. What we're trying to recognize here is that there is no, just happens to be an entire city that in December of 1964 decided to protect large lots to trails, to open space. And they developed a charter and a general plan specifically designed to promote that equestrian activity. What I would anticipate is if this goes through, we would have a local designation, probably Riverside County designation, and we probably could go to the state. We would see, because one of the requirements of a local historic district is if there's not another one, there's not another one, which makes it incredibly unique. In terms of ADUs, the ADUs per Sacramento are incredibly destructive to our properties. They're, we're targets. So one of the things that I anticipate we must do in tandem, and I mean, I just sent a list to Andy, 107 properties that already are deeded to have a secondary unit on them. So what my hope would be is that we would maybe craft an ADU ordinance that would fit, I mean, for example, one of the problems with ADUs right now is five-foot setbacks. Well, if you have an acre and you have a five-foot setback and you can't get to the back of your property, it's very difficult to rescue an animal who's in trouble, or it's very difficult to get a horse trailer back there. So you, one of the things we, I think we need to do in tandem with this, which is a separate subject, is to begin to identify the secondary units. In fact, one of the things I just found out today is that when we discover a quote "illegal secondary unit," we actually send a letter saying, "Do you know what? Under the law, you can now legalize this and codify it." I mean, I suspect, I mean, 107 to Andy doesn't even include mine, but there are lots of them. This particular proposal, the reason it came about was we were concerned about the lot split, and in the language, it said historic districts are exempt from the lot splitting. There are probably other things they're exempt from, but I think we, as a council, also must have a responsibility to create those secondary housing units. Per Senator Roth, when we talked to him, one of the things he said, the whole, it was confusing. And unfortunately, he really isn't in touch with what he's trying to do, but he did say something very important. Create workforce housing. So like my caretaker unit, I have and will have a caretaker that literally takes care of 29 horses. And part of their pay is that caretaker unit. We have somebody on California we know very well. She has a whole barn that has families living in it, and they take care of all kinds of animals on that property. So what it would be is we'd want to tailor it to what our particular uses are. But in terms of the type of house, it's not, it's not like the Wood Streets where there's a specific era of house that they're trying to protect that architecture. We're protecting a lifestyle. We're trying to protect the equestrian usage of a city that unbelievably in California decided that they were going to create an entire city to promote pleasure, trail, riding. And so that's really what the goal of this is. So it's actually a very legitimate effort to literally stay within the guidelines of our general plan and to stay within the guidelines of our charter. Nothing will actually change, except that we are now codifying that our trails are historic and they're important, and we want to protect. It's like we want to protect the house. Well, what we want to do here is protect the elements that allow us to jump on a horse on a large lot in a, you know, big barn, go on a trail and ride to the river. That's really what we're trying to protect. Have I misspoken at all?
No, it's very good.
Yep. Anyway, Robin?
At this time, I don't think I have any questions. I know there is a concern about property rights, and the way that I've read, the proposal is a big part of your work would be providing background and information and doing the outreach to our residents to provide that information. And to correct me if I'm wrong, please, but at this point in time, we're looking at a proposal for you to do the legwork and bring back something for us to potentially craft an ordinance, correct?
Yes.
Like, we're exploratory in nature through...
Ultimately, the ordinance, right.
Right. So we're exploratory in nature, basically saying, yes, we think this is a good idea. We want you to do some research and bring us back the findings. So there's nothing permanent or binding with this action, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So I just want the residents to know that, that this is really about exploring this. And you'll certainly have your work cut out for you should this be approved on education for all of us, because it's really, listening to Kevin, uncharted territory to have a historical district of this nature. So I'm kind of excited that that's, you know, potentially available. And then to speak to what Kevin has talked about, it really is just to give us another barrier from the constant encroachments and lack of local control that has just been chipping away at what we're trying to protect. And I don't think any of us would do that at the expense of property rights or people's personal rights either. So, you know, that's kind of the way that I look at this, is you're going to go on your fact-finding mission and provide us a bunch more information, and then we'll come back and folks can have their input and their say. So, thank you.
God, I love following you. You answer everything. All right. Bill, real quick, you got the As, which are A1s, A20s, all that.
Yes.
Okay. So it doesn't matter what size lot, as long as it's deemed agricultural residential, correct?
As long as it's in that zone.
Okay. So we're not going to worry about the R1s, R3s and all those?
Exactly.
Okay. I'm just, I'm going this through because people are probably out there wondering what's going on, too. You're going to, you don't have to send a survey, but we have to mail things out to people, correct?
It would be a notice. You'd be mailing out a notice of a hearing.
Okay. And did I hear you correctly, is, oh, a notice of a hearing?
Yes.
So if it's not, out of the 5,748, if 51% said no, this is more like, the hearings we have here is that if majority of people say no, that's one thing, but, John, correct me for a while, I'm just trying to make sense of this.
Yeah, I mean, as said, you are, but the other majority protest hearings are as a result of statute or requirements.
Right.
This is not.
Okay. That's what I wondered. Okay. Bill, does this, the historic district, does this go on that person's title? Property title?
No.
So they wouldn't, nobody would know if they bought it? Or it would be...
It would be like the zone of a property, the zone's not on your title.
An overlay on those properties, correct?
It would be, it would be a separate district, but like zoning, zoning doesn't appear on a title, but nonetheless, it's a part of the properties, you know?
Tells you what area you live in, if you live in an R or if you live in a, but that's fine. I just, I just wonder what, just the steps it goes through to signify this historic district.
Right.
So you probably answered the other two, is it doesn't affect their tax assessment, right?
It's not supposed to. I don't, I can't imagine why it would affect the tax assessment.
Okay. Because we've got people out there probably wondering what's going on.
Not an improvement on the property, so it's not something that would be assessed.
Well, it doesn't decrease their property value, then?
No.
Okay. Just throwing things out. And does it affect their real estate value? I mean, I don't think it does, but you're, it shouldn't, correct?
It shouldn't. That's a hard question to answer. I think in a lot of cases, people see that as an asset. You're in an historic district. It's a plus for a property, but how a person perceives that is going to be buying a property is really something I can't, I can't really tell you.
And if you're to start this, how long do you think this will take? I'm just curious.
Well, we probably, in the proposal, I've got a timeline.
Okay. Yeah, I saw. Just give me a ballpark.
I'm guessing probably three or four months.
Okay. That's ballpark. And then I will reiterate what Councilman Newton said. Definitely reach out to our communications people. They like videos, nice little video. Get with Councilmember Krenmeyer, she does excellent job, but the videos are good, okay? Okay. Thank you. That's it. Ms. Mayor?
Do we have any, any public comments? Dana?
No, you need to call an announcement, too.
They're getting ready to bring back to you the ADU ordinance that the state has reviewed. I just want to make sure that your understanding is that it does not exempt the ADU.
Right. Right.
At this time, we'll be calling for public comment for item... At this time, we'll be calling for public comment for item 5A. Callers, public is urged to call now for your public comment at 951-582-5557 to be placed into a queue, and the calls will be answered and ordered received. Please dial now.
We did receive several emails on this.
I do have one, while we're waiting for calls to come into the queue, I do have one email comment that has come in since we began the meeting this evening. I'll go ahead and read that as we wait to see if anybody comes into the queue. This one is from Linda Dixon for item 5, excuse me, we'll take this call. Hello, you are live. You have three minutes to speak. Please begin.
Hello, my name is Kurt Knox. I'm calling about the housing district. Kevin, you mentioned nothing will change, and you asked if you were misspoken, and the answer's no. So, let me go along with my comment. If creating a historical community will cause any zoning changes or changes to the housing overlays in the future, please do not continue. If this somehow passes, I fear the council will be forced to change a commercially zoned property to a high residential zone. I understand the state is requiring low-cost residential, but the state is not requiring low-cost residential residential in commercially zoned areas. If this in any way will force the council to change zoning, I am against it. Families purchased a house in Norco knowing the zoning or should have. When a family purchases next to a commercial property, they understand that they will be living next to businesses like bars, restaurants, dollar stores, or barber shops. Some of these options might be appealing to the residents, and some of these options may not be appealing. However, they chose to live next to businesses. When a family purchases next to a residential or a housing development overlay, they understand that they'll be living next to people. These neighbors could be loud, quiet, nice, low-income, or arranged in small lots. Some of these options might be appealing to these residents, and some of these options may not be appealing. However, they chose to live next to people. Please, no more zoning changes. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other calls in the queue. We are done with phone public comment. I will read the one that we have received via email, and this is from Linda Dixon. I apologize for the late entry on agenda item 5A. I would like to encourage council to vote yes on this item. As past chairman of the Norco Historical Preservation Commission, I definitely know how this will benefit our community and help to preserve our large lots and lifestyle. While on the commission, we began something similar, and our research indicated that historic districts within our community would be a definite asset. Thank you for your time, Linda Dixon. I just want to verify we have no further. We have no further public comment for item 5A.
Closing public comments, bringing you back to council. Bill, would you address Kurt's statement in terms of how this would affect a commercial zone? It's a little bit apples and oranges, I think.
It does not include commercial zones, so those would not be included in the district as it's currently being proposed, anyway. But the bigger point would be that nothing would change as far as zoning requirements are concerned, and so, what he's able to do now, he'll be able to do after the district is formed, and it won't change anything in regard to the use of his property, as far as restrictions that are already on the books.
And then, Alma, most commercial districts, Sixth Street is, Sixth Street has trails, which is a commercial zone, but Hamner Avenue, River Road, I think we've got some trails there, but there, but like, for example, Second and River, there is no trail there, correct? Yeah. So, that would not be, as a commercial area, changing the zoning, there would have nothing to do with the historic district, right, Bill and Alma?
That's correct.
Because there's no trail?
That's correct. And there can be trails in business districts, but they're not going to be included in the district unless-
The only one would be Sixth Street, which has trails on both sides of the street.
Right. Right now, it only pertains to the A zones. If the council wanted to include commercial zones, that could be done, but it's not a part of the current proposal.
Okay.
My two cents on what he meant by his comment is that if you effectively-
Speak into the microphone.
Yeah. If you effectively precluded multifamily uses within the historic, quote historic zone, that you'd be forcing the city to do it in commercial zones. I think that's what he was intending, so that you would be, in order to meet RENA numbers, you'd have to do it in commercial, because you wouldn't, and change commercials from commercially zoned to residentially zoned in order to comply with the state law, since you weren't allowing it in other areas. I think that's kind of a stretch, but nonetheless, I think that's what he was saying.
Pretty much all of those areas for low income have been predetermined for several years, and I think that, especially when, I envision if this happens, that we, in tandem, begin to legitimize many, many of the secondary units on properties as they stand today.
In addition, it would seem to me that if everything's in a historical district and you choose to make zone changes within that district, you're not precluded from doing that. I mean, it's a charter issue and four-fifths vote, and those kinds of things. But this doesn't put in place forever existing zones, as it can't, and if you thought that you needed to make changes in the historical area in order to comply with affordable housing requirements, you can do that. I mean, it's just irrelevant.
We're actually trying to preserve the neighborhoods as they stand. That's really what we're trying to do. Anyway, I'll bring it back. Robin, you have something?
Just probably a random question, but is there a title to the district, or would it be equestrian-themed horse district in the, or, yeah, equestrian-themed historic district? And the reason why I ask is, I did have a resident make a comment to me that we also have strong history in agriculture, too, so could it be, and there's been a push for, you know, more farming in this community again lately, could it be an agricultural and equestrian district, or is it not really a titled thing?
It'll have a title. You could title it anything you want to do, basically.
Okay. Thank you.
Ted, anything? Catherine?
Yes, just to clarify, because you were mentioning, Kevin, trails and trails on Sixth. So, the way I read it is, the only trails that would be included would be trails that are on somebody's property that's zoned A.
Well, the trails aren't on private property, they're adjacent in the right-of-way.
So, are they part of it, or no?
Pardon me?
Would they be, would they be part of the-
Trails would be part of the district, yes.
All the trails, then? I guess that's my question.
All the trails in the A zones.
In the A zones?
Yeah.
Okay. But not outside of the A zones, so like, Sixth Street is not A zone?
No, not the way it's being proposed right now.
Okay.
To clarify, though, I would, as a contributor, I would most certainly look to include the trails on Sixth Street. I mean, we have restaurants, so we already have a Western theme on Sixth Street that is to enhance and to let people know that they're coming into an equestrian community. Again, it wouldn't affect, I mean, right now, we have very, actually, very strict, Alma, we have very strict facade and Western themes that when you build, do construction on Sixth Street, you must follow. It wouldn't change any of that, wouldn't affect how you use your property, except the approved uses, but you actually have a very rare street with equestrian usage and trails on both sides of the street, and it would probably, and council makes up their own mind, but that would probably be something to look at as one of the additions to your equestrian district. Anything else, Catherine?
Yeah, I'm just having trouble wrapping my head around, and so, I appreciate my fellow council members' comments and insight in the idea of the whole city as a historic district and the number of people that it would affect positively or negatively, and I guess I haven't, we haven't gone through the process where people are able to give their comment, but that's sort of my hesitation or concern, is not knowing what the, you know, generally, I mean, we've heard from some people, but many people, I think, aren't even aware of what we're discussing, and it's such a large number of homes, and historical district can be understood in so many different ways, that it's a little hard for me to wrap my head around, I guess, moving, it's just a little hard for me to wrap my head around. I understand that we're exploring it, that it would be to incorporate all of these things and the purpose of it. I am curious to know what more of the public, you know, think. I think anywhere, I 100% support, you know, any neighborhood or area of Norco where people are all on board for this, absolutely 100%. I'm just curious if that is going to be the number of houses that we're proposing.
Greg? Anything? Do you have, no, do you have anything? Any comments, or?
Just a little question. Maybe a little fuzzy on where, Kevin, you had mentioned, and I think Catherine touched on it, is the relationship of the A properties and the trails. What if you live in a small pocket neighborhood, that we have a few that don't have horse trails on either side of the, there's no horse trails in these small pockets, but they are still zoned A properties?
Yeah, we'd need to craft the ordinance of those properties, wouldn't be excluded.
Okay. Because I'm, you know, off of California, what is it, east? I don't think, there's not horse trails in that.
Ton of horses.
Pardon?
There's a ton of horses.
Yeah, but there's no horse trails.
That's something we'd have to work out, I think.
Okay.
And keep in mind, as Robin indicated, that it's partly equestrian and partly agriculture.
Right, okay.
And notwithstanding no horse trail, it could well be agricultural.
I just wanted to make sure you weren't being excluded, just because there wasn't a horse trail in your-
Yeah, that's a good point. I was not aware that there are properties that don't have horse trails fronting them. So, that's something to be considered in putting this together.
Okay. Yeah, I'm aware of a couple. Thank you, Bill.
So, do we have any other comments?
Kevin, can I go?
Yeah, please.
I'm hoping to maybe provide Catherine a different perspective. In looking at the schedule and the budgeting that Bill has, and again, I just look at this as exploratory and outreach, and so, our job is going to be to outreach and get that feedback that you're desiring from the residents, but the way I see it, if we don't do that, there's no way for us to know, because we don't have a system in place to effectively gather that data from our residents. And, you know, as I look at this, we have staff reports, we have commission and council meetings, which are watched hopefully by a variety of audiences, and then create those touchpoints as well that I talked about when I talked about process and using our commission. So, there's the five of us, but every commissioner is a touchpoint for our community as well to receive feedback and get that information, and then, you know, working with our communications manager and getting that information out. And so, for me, a big part of this is letting people know what it is, doing that outreach, and then receiving that feedback, and I just can't see us doing that effectively if we don't take this first step. And so, because 5,000, it's a lot, and I, and I understand that, but I think most of us ran on a platform of, we want to protect Norco and the rural atmosphere and the lifestyle, and if we can't protect large lots and trails, then none of us have met our commitment to the residents, and so, the way I'm viewing this, this might be a tool in the toolbox. It may be that Bill does all the work, and he comes back, and it's not going to be a tool for the toolbox. But until this is done, I don't think we know if that's going to work or not. So, that's just my, my two cents and how my thought process is working on this particular agenda item.
One of the things, too, that I would do as far as outreach, would be to contact the various organizations out there, like Rural, to let them know what's happening, and those organizations are pretty good about getting the word out. So, I think through those kind of avenues, the word's going to get out over time.
One other thing, Bill, that I didn't see in your report, is that the aspect of open space, most people don't realize that, like, our La Sierra Hills is already protected in perpetuity. We have the park that's down, how many acres do we have, Bill, Brian, in the river? 240?
277.
Which is all protected, and I think those are things that need to be, they're already protected, and I think they somehow need to be included. They're not in the A1 or A120 or whatever, but I think that those are, the advantage we have is we understand what contributing factors are, and so, those might be contributing elements to the historic district. And so, those are things that you're probably going to have to clarify down the line, but without those big swaths of open space, you have nowhere to ride to, and part of the reason Norco works is you have the large lots to the trails, to the open space. And also, to Robin's point, I really do think that, yeah, we need to look at the agricultural element of our history. So, with that, any other comments? I'd like to make a motion to move forward on this.
Councilmember Alamon? Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion passed as unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Bill, thank you very much. Have fun with that big pile of stuff. Now, moving on to Sixth, City Council, City Manager, Staff Communications. Why don't we start with you, Alma? Anything? Lisette? Sam? Matt? Jeez, Matt, never any. Chief? Chief? John? Brian? Chad?
Just want to say thank you to the council for your support on renaming the facility at the yard for Terry. I really appreciate it, and his family does, too. Thank you.
We should have made more of a fuss, I should have pulled that, we should have made more of a fuss. Please tell the family it's an honor to name that facility after Terry. I'm going to miss him. Dana? Nothing. Andrew? Ted?
Yep, I got something. It's been said in some of our public comments earlier, and when this pandemic first started, we took extra steps during the Caprock Planning Commission to involve the public, and I know, I know I don't know all the rules for the COVID restrictions, but you have a planning commission coming up next week that is going to affect, their decision may affect two generations, 50 to 60 years of Norconians, and we need to make it accessible to the people to come in. We did it for Caprock, for that, for the egg ranch, and I see no reason why we can't try to put some kind of provisions for us to allow the public to come in here and do the same thing. That's just what we need to do, because it's, it's a very important project there at Third and Hamner, and so, we kind of need to do that. Thank you.
Robin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a request that we agendize for a future meeting, looking at amending or, well, amending Resolution 2013-21, and look at the code of ethics for the city of Norco. Is that okay? Do I have to make a motion?
That is a motion.
It's a motion, right?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Is there a second?
Discussion under Robin's motion?
Yes.
Could that also, not only with ethics, but also include just a review of social media policies, procedures? You craft it however you want, Robin.
You accept that addition to your motion?
Oh, yes. I accept Councilman Newton's recommendation to add that to our discussion.
Second.
Okay. So we'll take a vote. Councilmember Alamon?
Yes.
Councilmember Grumeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Anything else, Robin? Catherine? Greg?
Yes, thank you. What I want to compliment Dana and Matt, your phones seem to work tonight. Proud of you both. I also just wanted to concur with Councilmember Hoffman's comments about try to find some way to open up the planning commission meeting, hearing, and also further if it goes to city council, that we need to find some way to have the public here and present, especially on these major projects. So I'm in agreement with Ted's suggestion, as long as it's safe and proper. And that's all I have. Kevin, thanks for--
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Quickly.
Yeah.
Quite honestly, I'm not sure I understand how to accomplish that. The city council meetings currently are closed to the public. As far as public gatherings, they are still not -- they're still largely prohibited, even though we are conducting the city council meetings in person. That is not what is typical in most Riverside County cities currently. I understand if the city council wants to postpone the project hearing, we can do that. At this point, I'm not -- obviously, if the city council wants to, regardless of what the situation is, decide to open these meetings to the public, notwithstanding the other avenues that have been provided, to accept and receive public comments, I guess that's a city council decision. But I, again, I just want that direction from you that this is what you want.
Then I would make a motion that we don't hear that project until the public is allowed to come. Because as Ted made a very good point, what is being proposed is unprecedented in the entire history of this city. And it's something that I think every single resident is going to want to weigh in on. And so my suggestion would be, I mean, if they want to go before planning, but even that, I think should be postponed. I would prefer -- I mean, I've been to meetings where we literally filled the Corona Norco Unified School District annex. So I would suggest, I in fact make a motion, that we not hear that project until a significant number of Norco residents are allowed to hear, see, and talk to this council directly about that project.
I second that one.
Under discussion.
My assumption is that the -- I'm just clarifying the motion, that it includes the planning commission.
Yes.
Since absent appeal, the only thing the city council theoretically gets to hear is certifying the EIR and the track map.
I included the planning commission, yes. We're not breaking any laws. Can't get in trouble, right? This is a COVID issue until people can hear it, right?
Yeah. I'd be happier if we could define that a little bit better. Or if, for example, if we can -- if we're permitted to do what was done with Caprock, is that -- does that meet your requirement? Or is it has to be more than that?
I am going to -- Andy has told us that he has to follow very specific guidelines. And per those guidelines, he has said he is not comfortable. And let's face it, we just had a key member of this staff die of COVID. We're not over that yet. And so my concern is, is I'm going to -- whatever he tells me, we can do, when we can do it, I'm going to follow his advice. Until we can -- until he tells me we can have a big public meeting, I don't want to hear that project. And I don't think that--
Okay. So I'm just clarifying. So the answer is that unless the rules allow us to do even the things we did for Caprock, you don't want the planning commission to hear the project.
That's my feeling. Is that clear enough, Andy?
It's a motion. I have a second.
I'm under discussion on this.
Under discussion.
So with that, John, regarding the planning commission, since--
Yeah, but before you do that, I have one additional for Catherine's benefit, that since this is the motion, you need to declare that you have a conflict and step down.
Okay. I'd like to declare that I have a conflict of interest.
Based upon your personal residence?
Based upon my personal residence with the project at hand.
And then you can come down and sit in the audience.
Don't forget she has to spin three times and jump up and down and pat her head.
And click her heels together.
Yeah. Go ahead, Greg.
Okay. So since it's been public notice, there isn't any conflict on continuing an item?
Oh, no. I mean, you can -- we do that, I said, all the time, but pretty much all the time. I mean, the fact that something's been noticed doesn't mean you have to hold a hearing. We just cancel it and get word out as best we could.
Continue off calendar.
Yeah. No, we can't continue to date certain because we don't know when that date is.
Right. So Kevin, I would add that. Remove the planning commission agenda item to -- just off calendar.
I implied that, but do I need to add that?
No, I mean, that's pretty clear.
It's the only route you can go. Okay. I mean, I'm with Kevin and I'm with Ted on this, that the way we did the Caprock development with the public outreach, it was totally different. And the public has not had the opportunity to have public outreach in a full sense with the developer. And their input's important. I mean, I understand the avenue that we're trying to do with emails and phone calls.
You clearly couldn't have arbitrarily and capriciously taken it off calendar. And the developer says, hey, wait a minute. They're just trying to avoid hearing it and push it down the road, and that's damaging me.
I'll tell you this, if this clears this up for you--
But you're not doing it arbitrarily and completely capriciously.
Absolutely not.
You're doing it because of the necessity of public input and--
And public safety.
And the COVID regulations precluding that.
Right. I'm looking forward to the hearings.
Just further forward than you were.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I am looking forward to hearing Councilman Newton at the hearings.
Do we will vote? We have Councilmember Alamon abstaining. Councilmember Grumeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion passes with Councilmember Almon.
I have a couple of other things. Andy, I wasn't aware that we were actually sending letters out. You probably told me. Letters out to residents who have illegal units in the back and that we're letting them know that they have the ability to legalize them to help us with our RENA numbers, also to create secondary units. So that's not correct? Okay. You know what? We're going to go off. We better go off. Okay. Then, okay, I was going to congratulate you because I was told that today. I thought it was -- all right. Okay. Okay. I guess I'm going to call you tomorrow. Also, Chad, thank you so much for looking into the parking on the left side of the trail fencing. I realize, like, if you go up where Ted lives, it's a natural thing to do because you have the curb and gutter. But like on Pedley or Corona or some of those, it doesn't work. So thank you for looking into that. I appreciate it. I was a little concerned the other night that there's a discussion of pavers in the trails. And I -- maybe I was confused, but just for the record, that's something way before you even got here is a very hot topic. And I'm really hoping that -- I'm hoping that we -- I hope I don't have to hear a recommendation for pavers in the trails. I understand all the arguments, and I've been down all those roads, but I'm really hoping that we remember that we're in Norco and those trails are really for horses and stuff. And then one of the other things I want to make people aware of is Riverside has a new mayor. And they did something very contradictory. One, they said that they want to preserve and protect the Santa Ana River Trail. And yet, they spent $125 million or dedicated to put in high transmission lines, which cowl fire, in a letter that we know is there, but nobody's allowed to see it, says it can burn down everything in the riverbed. So I'm wondering if we should come up, Andy. We've sent many letters, but maybe we should send a delegation over to meet the mayor of Riverside and make her aware. Just instead of sending a letter, ask to make an appointment, I would recommend that we send Robin and Catherine. You guys go meet with the mayor and just say, look, we got a problem here. We're worried about fires. We're worried about this. We're worried about that. If you guys are agreeable to that. What do you think, Andy?
Do you know the homeless?
Yeah. Talk to them about the homeless? I mean, that's another avenue. Is that something -- because I think you know her, don't you? Dawson?
Not the name.
Okay. All right. So anyway, I don't know any of them. But so can we facilitate that and try to set up an appointment to meet with them and to talk to them about our concerns about all of our houses burning down over here? All right. And other than that, that's all I have, what I would like to do if there's nothing else. As many of you know, a wonderful man passed away. And I've known him, and he's been a huge supporter of this council, and just a wonderful man. And Bill Hartman passed away the last few days, and I want to have a moment of silence in his memory.